Welcome to the City of Iowa City Meeting for May 2, 2023. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
All right. Well, good evening to everyone in the audience and to those that are virtual. We're happy that you're here in your city halls. So welcome again. We're going to go to item number two, which is Proclamations. Two A is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and Asia American and Pacific Islander Day Against Bullying. And this will be read by our own Mayor Pro Tem Alter.
Thank you. Whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month was first proposed as a commemorative week by Representative Frank Horton of New York and signed into law by President Jimmy Carter with the first with the week's first recognition being in 1979, but was amended to its present form as an annual celebratory month in 1992. And whereas the term Asian Pacific is very broad and includes many peoples and cultures from the entire Asian continent to the Pacific Island groups of Micronesia, Melanesia, and Polynesia, and thus encompasses diverse populations within one group designation. And whereas the contributions Americans of Asian and Pacific Island heritage have made to this society are too many and varied to list comprehensively. And whereas the API community is the fastest growing racial group in America today, and today is an important moment to recognize not only our longtime communities, but also our newcomers. Asian Pacific Americans have made contributions ranging from building connections to the rest of the U.S. with the Transcontinental Railroad, to service with valor in our armed forces, to the fields of agriculture, business, education, health, and technology. And whereas the API community has been marked by a struggle for freedom, equality, and justice prevailing over the adversity of exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities. And whereas, May 18 is the birthday of Vincent Chen, who was brutally murdered in a hate crime in 1982. His murder fueled a national Asian American activist movement that continues to this day. And whereas, we have seen a staggering rise in bullying, discrimination, and hate crimes against the Asian American and Pacific Islander community during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, in honor of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and Vincent Chen's birthday, May 18th shall be an API Day Against Bullying and Hate. And whereas, Act to Change is a national nonprofit dedicated to fighting bullying in the Asian American and Pacific Islander community. To find resources, visit acttochange.org. And now therefore, I, Megan Alter, Mayor Pro Tem, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 to be Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 18, 2023, to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Day Against Bullying in Iowa City, and urge all community members to join Act to Change. The City of Iowa City is committed to this important issue and encourages the public to foster dialogue, share resources, and learn more about what they can do to fight bullying. And accepting are Sylvia Johns, Sue Ann Shannon, Master Bay, Master Dongji, and Nali.
On behalf of the AAPI community, we're proud to be here with the mayor and the city council and accept the Iowa City AAPI Month proclamation. AAPI Month is a time to celebrate and recognize the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to our country. It is time to honor their heritage and culture and acknowledge the challenges that they have faced and overcome.
So Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have a rich history in this country dating back to the 1800s when Chinese immigrants first came to California. Since then, AAPIs have made significant contributions in many areas, including science, technology, medicine, politics, and arts. Despite their many contributions, AAPIs have also faced discrimination and injustice from the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882 to intermittent of Japanese Americans during World War II, to the recent rise in anti-Asian hate crimes. AAPIs have had to fight for their rights and dignity. Luckily, we are not alone. We got the support from City of Iowa City, and since 2022, they proclaim May 18 as the AAPI Day Against Bullying. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
That's why the AAPI Heritage Month is so important. It's a time to celebrate the achievements of AAPIs and to acknowledge the challenges they have faced and continue to face and overcome. It is a time to raise awareness of the contributions of AAPIs and to promote understanding and respect for their cultural and heritage. AAPI Month is also an opportunity to educate ourselves and others about the issues that affect AAPIs. It is a time to speak out against discrimination and hate and to support AAPI communities. We are proud of all the contributions and the rich diversity that makes up the Iowa City AAPI community, and look forward to celebrating, educating, and encouraging our fellow citizens to stand in solidarity with AAPI communities. Thank you. And we are inviting everyone in the city council and in attendance to attend the first AAPI Awareness Festival. So this event is a collaboration between City of Iowa City Human Rights Commission and City of Iowa City Parks and Rec and Iowa City Chinese Cultural Society. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Dongzhi, Master Dongzhi. I'm very delighted to be here to represent my temple in Iowa City. Our Temple Ultra Buddhist Association is a nonprofit organization. Throughout the week, we provide mindfulness activities, and we have meditation and Buddhist chanting activities as well. And we hope in teaching mindfulness, it can help everyone stay calm and safe in today's society. And on Thursday, we plan to start, oh, sorry, as part of the immigrant community, we provide support by having English conversation classes on Monday for new immigrants who are learning the language. And we also promote healthy eating habits by providing vegetarian meals to our members and volunteers. And we also, right now, we're also working closely with the Food Pantry in Corville to reduce and eliminate waste, food waste. So we turn the excess food into meals for the community and also provide them to our volunteers as well. So, and I want to take the time to thank you for this opportunity to be here. And anyone is welcome to the temple. We hope this is like home for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to all of our speakers. Proclamation two B is Bicycle Month and Bike to Work Week. This is going to be read by Counselor Burgess.
Whereas, the bicycle is an economical, healthy, and environmentally sound form of transportation, recreation, and enjoyment. And whereas, increasing bicycle access and safety enables residents of Iowa City, including young people, to participate more fully in the educational, social, and economic life of our community. And whereas, the metro-area bicycle network, including our off-street trail system, now attracts bicycle tourism and economic development that helps to support and sustain local businesses. And whereas, throughout the month of May, residents of Iowa City can experience the joys of bicycling by participating in educational programs, rides, commuting events, charity events, or simply by going for a ride. And whereas, these activities create greater public awareness of rights and responsibilities of bicyclists to improve safety for all. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Bicycle Month and May 15 to 21st as Bike to Work Week in Iowa City. And I urge all residents who are able to join in this observance by bicycling for fitness, recreation, or to commute to work. Further, I ask all motorists to drive safely and with full attention to the road by putting away electronic devices, obeying all traffic signs, signals, and speed limits, sharing the road by allowing no less than five feet of separation when passing a cyclist, or taking to the adjacent lane to pass on roads with speed limits over 25 miles an hour, and yielding to bicyclists and pedestrians as required by law. Accepting this proclamation this evening is Matt Burkey, who is a bike ambassador for Bike Iowa City.
Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Iowa City is not just a great place to live, but also a great place to ride a bike. And I believe the bicycle is an important tool for Iowa City's goals of racial equity and climate action. And I look forward to seeing future cycling progress made by this council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Two C is Jewish American Heritage Month, and this will be read by Counselor Harmson.
Thank you. Whereas, the Jewish American experience, as President Biden so aptly proclaimed, quote, "is a story of faith, fortitude, and progress. It is a quintessential American experience, one that is connected to key tenants of American identity, including our nation's commitment to freedom of religion and conscience." This month, we honor Jewish Americans, past and present, who have inextricably woven their experience and their accomplishments into the fabric of our national identity. Generations of Jewish people have come to this nation fleeing oppression, discrimination, and persecution in search of a better life for themselves and their children. These Jewish Americans have created lives for themselves and their families, and played indispensable roles in our nation's civic and community life, making invaluable contributions to our nation through their leadership and achievements, end quote. And whereas, equal opportunity for all, regardless of age, color, creed, disability, familial status, gender identity, marital status, national origin, presence or absence of dependents, public assistance, source of income, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation, is a fundamental goal of our city. And whereas, we recognize the historic accomplishments of Jewish Americans, such as Moses Bloom, the mayor of Iowa City from 1873 to 1875, and the first Jewish mayor of an American city; Libby Hyman of Des Moines, author of the 1919 volume, A Laboratory Manual for Elementary Zoology; Philip Roth, American novelist, who taught at the University of Iowa's Writers Workshop in 1960. And whereas, as the president further proclaimed, and I quote, "Alongside this narrative achievement and opportunity, there is also a history of racism, bigotry, and other forms of injustice." This includes the scourge of antisemitism. In recent years, Jewish Americans have increasingly been the target of white nationalism and the antisemitic violence it fuels. As our nation strives to heal these wounds and overcome these challenges, let us acknowledge and celebrate the crucial contributions that Jewish Americans have made to our collective struggle for a more just and fair society. Leading movements for social justice, working to ensure that the opportunities they have secured are extended to others, and heeding the words of the Torah, "Justice, justice shall you pursue." We honor Jewish Americans who, inspired by Jewish values and American ideals, have engaged in the ongoing work of forming a more perfect union, end quote. Now therefore, I, Sean Harmson, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Jewish American Heritage Month. And accepting tonight is Rabbi Esther Hugenholz, and if possibly by Zoom Samantha Marks.
Thank you, friends. An honor to stand before this council. I don't think I have much to add to this beautiful proclamation, which is rare for a Jewish person. All I want to say is that, just as we keep it national, we keep it local here in Iowa City, our community has been part of the fabric of the city for over a century. We feel loved, welcomed, and cherished by our fellow Iowa Cityans, and it is an honor to work alongside you to further the cause of justice and friendship between all peoples, all faith communities, and all ethnic groups. Let us be strengthened. Let us remain curious about each other. Feel free to stop by the synagogue. Feel free to reach out to your fellow Jewish Iowa Cityans if you're curious about our culture, our faith, and our ethics. With gratitude in my heart for the holy work that you do, and blessings for you all. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to, we're going to go on Zoom. Welcome Samantha Marks.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys, so much for the opportunity to accept this on behalf of the American Jewish Committee, based here in Chicago. I am an Iowa City West High School grad and a Iowa hot guy, so I'm very, very proud to be here to accept on behalf of the American Jewish Committee. And as a former Iowa City resident, my mom still lives locally, so we still have our roots there. And we're incredibly grateful to be a part of the Iowa City community, as well as see the Jewish community flourish in so many different ways amongst all of the wonderful, wonderful people that live in Iowa City and Johnson County. So thank you again, Mayor Teague, for welcoming us today, and really greatly appreciate it.
Proclamation two D is Missing and Murder Indigenous Women's Day. Whereas indigenous women go missing and are murdered at rates higher than any other ethnic group in the United States. And whereas, the National Center for Disease Control reports that homicide is a leading cause of death for indigenous women and girls. And whereas, whereas an accurate account of how many indigenous women are affected is difficult to determine, making the scope of the epidemic uncertain. And whereas indigenous women are worthy of personal sovereignty and equal protection under the law. And whereas, the City of Iowa City stands with the indigenous communities in condemning and preventing acts of violence and discrimination, and we commit to ensuring opportunities exist for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim May 5, 2023, to be Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women's Day, and encourage all community members to observe, recognize, and encourage collective action to bring Missing and Murder Indigenous Women's Day crisis to an end. And receiving this is going to be Sakawas Nobis.
Tonti, Mio, Pone, Piti, Gisgau. Hello. Good afternoon, or I guess in the evening now. My name is Sakawas Nobis, and I am here today to accept this award on behalf of the indigenous community of Iowa City and indigenous people across Iowa. The reality is, is that Native American and Alaska Native woman endure the highest rates of rape and assault in this country. Older statistics told us that one in three Native American woman will be raped or experience sexual assault in their lifetime. But recently, that statistic has moved to one in two. And now it's actually more like 56%. So, since that was written, actually. So, you know, 84% of Native American and Alaska Native women have experienced violence. And that number can be higher in some of our communities if you talk to grassroots folks. Over 60% have experienced psychological aggression or coercive control, and 90% have experienced violence at the hands of non-travel members. And that number actually also is for both genders, actually, men and women. So, experts say that these astonishing statistics still underestimate the number of women affected by violence because the infrastructure for a woman to report and handle incidences is underfunded. Also, there is a lack of local law enforcement on reservations and tribal courts that do not have jurisdiction to prosecute non-travel members of many crimes like sexual assault and rape, even if they occur on our nation's territories. And our men and boys are also facing similar statistics. Basically, there is a crisis going on, an epidemic that is unseen and unheard, and that is because we face such high rates of erasure, whitewashing, and stereotyping in this country. You'd think that here in Iowa, we would be, you know, hearing more about this, because for instance, there are, as of 2021, 107 of 6,300 missing people reports in Iowa involve Native Americans and Alaska Native peoples, totaling 1.69% of this population that is currently missing, yet we only make up 0.54% of the population of Iowa. So, the next point I want to talk about is how on summer reservations in the United States, Native women are murdered at more than 10 times the national average. And right now, within the national missing database, I think there's about close to 6,000 Native women in there. But again, that number is low because there's a lot of folks that aren't identifying as Native American or being identified as Native American after they go missing, or even when the bodies are found. We have a huge, huge issue here. Like, Rita Popke is missing from the Musquebec Nation, and we have a lot of women that have been killed right on the border of Iowa and Nebraska, like Lenny Blackbird and Kozi Decora, and so many more. Ashley Wabashaw was just murdered not too long ago in the Nebraska region. But remember, as indigenous people, we don't see borders. We don't believe in border imperialism. This area of the world is under attack. And indigenous peoples are paying for that. And so that's why we are very glad to see that places like Iowa City that are considered, you know, safer, where indigenous peoples aren't necessarily being, you know, outright brutalized, are recognizing this and understanding that they have to work in partnership with other places like Sioux City, like Omaha, which is eighth in the nation right now for missing, or sorry, for missing women. I think they have, I can't remember the amount, but, and then the state of Nebraska, that is seventh in the nation for missing women, which has like something like 25 missing women right now. So, that, those numbers also are here in this state, but nobody's doing anything about it. So I implore the City of Iowa City to do more about this and help us get legislation put in place that will, you know, get some kind of program to, you know, gather statistics, look into also sexual assault and sex trafficking as well, which is also a huge issue in our communities. And, and so much more. We have, we have so many more things I could talk about, but obviously, I don't have the time here. But thank you very much for doing this. This is a really big deal for us and the indigenous community. I hiike tato mahin.
Thank you. Proclamation two E is NAMI Mental Health Awareness Day. This will be read by Counselor Dunn.
Whereas, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, is the nation's largest grassroots mental health organization dedicated to building better lives for the millions of Americans affected by mental illness. And whereas, the face of mental illness isn't some stranger. It's our coworkers, our neighbors, our friends, our families, and sometimes ourselves. And whereas, mental illness does not discriminate. It affects adults, children, and people of every ethnic, socioeconomic, religious, or political background. And whereas, one of five adults in the United States experiences a diagnosable mental disorder, and one in five youth aged 13 to 18 experiences a severe mental disorder in a given year. And whereas, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for America's youth ages 15 through 24, and the vast majority of those who die by suicide have a mental illness that is often undiagnosed or untreated. And whereas, half of all chronic mental illness begins by age 14, and three quarters begins by age 24. Therefore, treating cases early could address and reduce disability before mental illnesses become more severe. And whereas, NAMI Johnson County will hold its annual walk at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 6, at the Terry True Blood Recreation Area in Iowa City. The walk aims to inspire and initiate, initiate a community conversation about the impacts that mental illness has on every part of our collective lives, from family systems to primary healthcare, to the education systems, to the business community and beyond. Now therefore, I, Andrew Dunn, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim May 6, 2023, as NAMI Mental Health Awareness Day, and urge all residents to increase the awareness and understanding of mental health and be informed of the treatment options available in our county for individuals with mental illness. Accepting this proclamation is Mary Issa, NAMI Executive Director of Johnson County.
Thank you so much for this recognition. As we kick May off as Mental Health Awareness Month, and I encourage everybody to come out to the walk on Saturday and come. It's a day we like to celebrate, that we come together and acknowledge mental illness in our community and the impact it has. But we have a fun day with music and entertainment and speakers, so I encourage everybody to come out and participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final proclamation is going to be two F, and this is Older Americans Month, read by Counselor Pauline Taylor.
Whereas Iowa City includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences. And whereas, Iowa City is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging that there are many valuable contributions to society. And whereas, Iowa City recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. And whereas, Iowa City can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community to promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, I, Counselor Pauline Taylor, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Older Americans Month in Iowa City, and urge every resident to take time this month to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them. Accepting is, and I hope I don't trash your name here, Bob Untied? Untied, Untied, okay. And John Clayhorn, and perhaps some members of the senior center, our senior commission?
I'll get my spiel underway, so we can get this over. My name is Angela McConville, and I serve as chair of this Iowa City Senior Center Commission, which has one vacancy. If anybody is interested in serving, apply through the City of Iowa City. The mission of the senior center mirrors the language in the proclamation, and their actions, policies, classes, events, collaborations with social service organizations, and relationships with cities, like North Liberty, where I work, go above and beyond to support area seniors, especially during the pandemic, thanks to Latasha, Michelle, Kristin, Emily, and Jessie, small team. Iowa's population is aging, but Iowa City is one of few areas rich with resources for older adults. The local people who work directly with our aging population serve as a patchwork quilt to make sure there's, there are no gaps in need. In addition to the senior center, this quilt is comprised of the Heritage Agency on Aging, Abbey Health Aging Services, Horizons Meals on Wheels, the advocacy of the older Iowans Legislature, University of Iowa College of Law, especially the work of Len Sandler, Johnson County Aging Specialist, Navigator and Mobility Coordinators, Livable Community for Successful Aging, Dementia Friendly Iowa and Alzheimer's Association, AARP. Trail of Johnson County, SHIP, area libraries, hospitals, pharmacies, and medical equipment suppliers, home health aides, and visiting nurses, senior housing communities, and transportation, like Iowa City Transit, Johnson County Seats, Medicaid Rides through Yellow Cabin, Yellow Transport, and United Way RSVP. I hope everyone appreciates the expertise and compassion of folks who work or volunteer for these organizations and others I'm sure I neglected to mention. I would also like to plug that I'm in Iowa City Community Theater's production of the musical Follies by Stephen Hassanheim about a 1971 reunion of old Follies showgirls, where most of the characters are between 50 and 70 years old. The story touches upon loss of youth and changes in relationships over time. We have three more performances this weekend. I appreciate that theater is a hobby that lasts a lifetime, where there are starring roles of any age in Iowa City. Thank you.
I'm Bob Untied. I'm the Executive Director of Trail. We have always appreciated the support we've gotten from the city, especially through space at the Senior Center. We also support aging showgirls, as was noted, or of any age. And I'm also here representing with a colleague, John Cologne, as the Chair of the Johnson County Livable Communities Organization. Iowa City has just under 9,000 seniors, and it's expected that by the year 2030, there will be more persons over 65 living in the county than under 18. So we're a resource that, we appreciate everything that the city has done for in the past and hope you'll look to ask us to do more in the future. Thanks very much.
Hello, my name is Jay Gilchrist, and my wife Pam is here in the back row. I and Pam retired here a year and a half ago because it's one of the best places to retire. We did our research, and we also grew up in Iowa, went to the university here, were married here, but worked most of our careers away. But we're glad to be here because, and the Senior Center is one of the main reasons why we wanted to come back here, along with family, along with a very livable community. But we hang out there a lot. As a matter of fact, we're going over after this. Anybody can come along if they want. They're showing a documentary about Pete Seeger, and we're going to sing some good old folk songs and peace and justice songs and those kinds of things. Anyway. Say what? Was he? Okay, well, come on along. The more the merrier. Anyhow, the Senior Center is a great place, a lot of good programs to keep people socially engaged, to focus on wellness, to focus on lifelong learning, and most of all, in this context, to focus on community engagement. It started out with something I heard way back when called the Council of Elders. Now we have lots of councils of elders and wisdom circles and all over, and we want to be part of the wisdom circle too of this great city of Iowa City.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone that came for these proclamations. Really appreciate you coming here to your city hall. We're going to move on to our consent calendar, items three through six. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
I'll move, Taylor.
Second, Alter.
All right. Anyone from the public like to discuss any item that is on our consent agenda? That would be items three through six. Anyone online? Seeing no one. House of discussion? Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. We're at item number seven, which is a time for a community comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak on an item that is not on our agenda. So if you're here, please raise your hand so that I can see who is here to speak on an item that is not on our agenda. And I see two people online, three people online, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So we're going to go with three minutes. And there is a sign-in little card in the back if you want to get your name signed in. And there is a basket here. Otherwise, you can sign in here. I'm going to ask people to line up so that we can hear from each one of you. We'll go online to Trupain. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from. Trupain, we can't hear you. You're...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Hey, greetings, and thank you for the welcome. And my name is Trupain Beatty Bay, longtime resident of the Iowa City area. I currently live in Hiawatha. And one of the topics that I was, that brought a lot of concern to me is the fact that the officers, I mean, this has to, kind of has to do with the systematic racism, but yet it's its own animal. And what this has to do with is, we're looking at the police officers pulling people over, and we see that there are 28 cases. I sent in to you guys. I don't know if you guys got the email. I sent it to Ms. Kelly through the email, but there's 28 cases that I have sent in to you guys to show that license registration and license registration and there's some, license registration and assurance is not required by the Supreme Court. Yet, this is one of the avenues where we see the most, to the most gateway to racial disparity. If people are unable to travel to and from work, and those rights are being held by the Constitution, where it says in Article Six, "All those who took an oath," or judges or that nature, "are held to the Constitution, and anything that's not within the Constitution is notwithstanding." Yet, you have officers that are pulling people over and pounding their vehicles, and this is all a real breach and erroneous method of enforcing laws. Matter of fact, if you read in there, there's a quote by a justice. If I can pull this up real quick, and I'm going to try to keep this under three minutes, but I have so much information that I could present. It's just, right now, let me pull this up real quick. And if you look at one of these cases, and I have been a victim of this just recently, and I tried to inform them of the violations that they had took in place with me, but they ignored it and chose to do what they wanted to do. And if you look at this case, Shapiro versus Thompson, which is Chief Judge Egerton, it says, "Iron curtains have no place in the free world. Undoubtedly, the right of locomotion, the right to remove from one place to another according to inclinations is attributed of personal liberty, and the right ordinarily of free transit from or through the territory of any state is a right secured by the Constitution." Yet, this right is being violated by all the Leos. And this is not an attack on them. They're only doing what they know. But if it's not required for them to study law, it's not required for them to hold on.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Sherman White, and I'm from Iowa City. And I'm here tonight because I'm asking this council to investigate and audit the shelter house staff, starting with the director, Chrissy Canganelli, Rachel Lehman, Nicole Chaplin, and Maya, John Posey, Mariah Breeze, Julia May. These individuals are part and parcel to the abuse and circumventing of shelter house mission and purpose for their own personal gains. Currently, I am being faced with homelessness. I have $193, three-day notice for past due rent. I live on a fixed income. I have diabetic neuropathy, but I was told by the above shelter house staff there were no funds available to help me. It's my understanding that this council awarded Shelter House $1.1 million to prevent this from happening. So why am I being treated differently from whites that similarly situated? I further substantiate my claim of misappropriation of funds and unethical practices as listed below. There's no one there. They have all these managers there, but there's no one there to deal with people of geriatrics, people, older citizens. Not one time when they was looking for housing for me did they go to senior housing. They never looked for senior housing. Where I live at now, in Town and Campus, I'm the oldest individual there. And there's people fighting and ODing every day out there. And I have to deal with that on a daily basis. And there's no housing available for African males or poor people. They only put us in high-crime areas like Town and Campus, Lakeside, and there's, I can't even think of the other place that they sent us to. They don't try to meet your needs or what's available for you. They always send us to these high-crime areas. Boston Way is the other place that I was thinking about. And they don't live there. They wouldn't put their grandparents there. They wouldn't put their wife and children there, but they put us there. They don't want us to have anything nice. They don't want us to live comfortably, you know. And it's always there's something there. And as far as the food, they don't feed us. They don't clothe us. They don't provide medical care for us. And I don't know where the money is going. They give you one hot meal there at the shelter house, where at one point, you was getting three hot meals there. They give you one hot meal. And if you have a special diet, if you're diabetic or have special needs, you don't eat. You don't get to eat. I had to buy my own food when I was there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll have you come next. Welcome.
My name is Guillermo Romano Ibarra. I'm from Iowa City. I'm here to discuss the new City Park Pool redesign. I'm aware that the new design is trying to take the experience of people with disabilities, and so I'm here to share my relationship with the pool. I moved to Iowa City in 2016 to come to medical school, and I was thrilled to see how many opportunities there were in Iowa City to be outside and do exercise outside and be in the outdoors. Things changed for me in 2019 when I was hit by a car while riding my bicycle. I was outside of Iowa City, and they were going 62 miles per hour. So I got sustained pelvis fractures, spine fracture, and for several months, I could only move with a wheelchair. And eventually, I started standing and literally relearning to walk. Today, I can move around with a crutch. I still use a wheelchair at work, and I, big epic things like airports and Costco. So my life changed in many ways, but one of the most impactful for me personally was losing the ability to exercise outside. And I couldn't run, and I couldn't cycle anymore. And I found a lot of refuge in City Park Pool, where I could swim outside and for a number of different reasons. So for me, it was the easiest pool for me to get to from my car. It's the shortest distance from the ADA spots to the actual physical pool in Iowa City. It's also the first pool that I felt confident enough to walk to instead of having to bring my wheelchair. And that's because the surface on all the other pools in Iowa City are very slick and slippery. And so City Park was the first place that I was able to walk to for my swim. And then, most importantly, for me, it was the 50-meter configuration was long and open, and it gave me a sense of freedom that I had only had in other exercise activities outside. And so I'm here with the Back to the Future Group. It's a couple, lots of different types of pool users, and what we have in common is that we'd like all of our uses and all of our views to be taken into account with the new design. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Audrey Keith, online.
Hello, my name is Audrey Keith, and I'm here to follow up on the city council meeting that happened on April 4th. At the time, the council was considering Laura Burgess's amendment, and a lot of people talked about how they liked the spirit of the amendment, but they needed to gather more information. And so I was wondering, like, what has been done? If there are any plans in the works to go and gather that information? And specifically, I would like to request having a neighborhood meeting over at Mercer Park, because this is my own neighborhood. And I would love for the opportunity to be able to gather in that park with my neighbors to hear their perspectives as well as to voice my own. And I'm specifically hoping that a lot of work is done to get community input, because I see that last year, the council voted to increase the police budget by over $1 million. And I was, I'm unaware of what work was done to understand the community's support for that increase at that time. So I was wondering if I could get an answer to that question at some point, and also wondering what is being done to get community input now. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, evening, councilors. My name is Riley from Iowa City. I have a very similar comment. With my neighbors organized and did a lot of research the month before the April 4th vote about the police budget specifically, but actually about the entire budget. And so the month before, felt really engaged, and it seemed like y'all thought that the evening of was not the right time. And now we're a month after that, and just wondering where in the remaining 10 months of the year should we expect to engage usefully? Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome, Yuan, online.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
My name is Yuan, and I live in Iowa City. I've heard the, last month, I heard the city council was unwilling to reallocate the $1.6 million from the police, citing that they believe in the spirit of the proposal, but needed more concrete ideas in order to vote for it. I hope the city council was serious about this belief. I'm afraid that these beliefs were nothing but empty words in order to appease a passionate audience who showed up nothing more than to create a better Iowa City, which they know is possible. I'm afraid that the city council will keep allowing the status quo to continue, when the status quo is criminalizing houselessness, criminalizing drugs and drug addiction and evictions just due to the inability to pay. Is that justice? Is that what we want for our community? I want to come to the council in good faith, or hear from the council, who I believe are in good faith. So please, listen to the people of the community who want more than the status quo. They want real change. And I believe the council can start that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, council. My name is David Sterling from Iowa City. It has been one month since the council decided to fund the police department an additional $1.6 million despite overwhelming dissent from the community and two out of seven councilors voting against. Councilors Teague, Alter, Taylor, Harmsen, and Thomas all said that not passing said funding would require more data and community input. It was also stated that the budget could be amended, so this would be a valid topic going forward. You did not specify what data. Two weeks ago, I asked you what data is missing, and you did not clarify, nor have you since. The scientific consensus supports defunding the police as a community safety measure, and the only community input has continued to voice opposition to said funding. How do you plan to respect the criteria you've laid out given its support to funding the police? I also wish to support an audit of the shelter house staff, given the plethora of comments, sorry, complaints about their conduct and abuse over the past two years. It is appalling how these complaints have been made to council without action, and I believe that this council, in good faith, would support such action. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Catherine. Thank you. Welcome Catherine.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, I'm Catherine. I am from Iowa City and, um, I'm really glad that some people brought up the police budget because this was actually something I wanted to bring up. On November 4th, my husband was having a mental health crisis and happened to relapse, uh, on drinking and I needed help. This has happened multiple times, uh, in other states where we have lived. In fact, the house had been swatted in Wisconsin. This specific incident, uh, he didn't get arrested, um, but I was advised to go to a hotel and my husband stayed at home. I'm sorry, I'm getting over a sickness. For the next five months, I lived at home with my husband peacefully. On March 1st, I got a text that, um, was from my husband and he mentioned that the police were there to arrest him on a domestic violence warrant. The detective that I spoke to in regard to the domestic violence issue was the most demeaning, condescending man that I have ever spoken to in my life. He did not listen to me, he victimized me, and he made me feel like a truly, truly helpless person. When I said that I felt like the Iowa City Police handled this situation horribly, he condescendingly responded, "Why don't you tell the Domestic Violence Intervention Program that?" Iowa City Police should be ashamed of themselves. Because of their actions, my husband spent four weeks inside the Johnson County Jail, where he was treated like a monster. My husband wasn't allowed to communicate with me and we found out that he was there for three weeks without any type of care and he didn't even need a lawyer to start the mental health program. I have now spent over $3,000 staying at a hotel because my husband was going to be released to shelter house otherwise. And, uh, I think that that is also something that's disgusting and that's also the fault of the police. You guys did a piss-poor job of handling this and I really hope that Officer Fruin has trouble sleeping at night.
Thank you. Welcome.
Um, hello, my name is Harley Upshaw. I'm a resident of Iowa City. A little over a month ago, you unanimously passed a proclamation calling for the uplifting and recognition of the trans community. You also condemned anti-trans legislation in this proclamation. Despite doing this, on April 4th, only about two weeks after that proclamation, you gave 1.6 million dollars to the police department, the very people who will be responsible for enforcing the laws you condemned. The laws that criminalize medical care for trans kids and the laws that ban trans kids from playing sports. As a trans person myself, I believe the budget should be revisited and a portion of the funds be put towards supporting trans people, especially trans people of color, and the rest be distributed across community healing programs like the TRC. All of you claim to want to support trans people, so prove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tri-Pain, your hand is up, but you've already spoken.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Yes, welcome. Hello, I would like to, uh, thank you. I would like to thank the, um, previous person for speaking about how this council says it supports trans people and then just a week later, a couple of weeks later, you gave them a million, the cops another million dollars increase. Uh, I just like, it's just very disturbing that you would do that when that same police officer, since you've given them over a million dollars budget increase, has arrested at least one protester of a man who was called for the eradication of trans people, Matt Walsh. And ICPD felt it necessary to arrest people who were protesting a man as self-preaching fascist who calls for eradication of trans people. And ICPD thought, okay, let's go after these people who are protesting a man who wants to genocide. It's really disturbing that you think that department deserves a million dollar raise when they're gonna go after anti-fascist individuals who don't want a trans genocide, while ICPD apparently does want that genocide. And you just gave them over a billion doll, an extra million dollars. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Amy Kretkowski, I'm from Iowa City. I'm here with my friends from, uh, City Park Pool, Back to the Future, to express my ongoing support for preserving City Park Pool. On page three of the RFQ, the Request for Qualification, that the city council recently approved, under Scope of Services, it says that the consultant will present the report of current conditions and analysis of viability for renovating the existing pool to the city council. If the city council decides to renovate the existing facility, it goes on to say the project will proceed to item number 13. So this language suggests that, that at some point, the city council is going to vote on whether to renovate the current pool or replace it with a new design. The schedule in the RFQ calls for the city council to approve the contract with the chosen consultant on June 20th, 2023. And the RFQ also says that the report of the current conditions and analysis of the viability is going to occur in July, which is when the pool will be filled with water. The engineering reports that you have from 2018 and 2021 were both based on visual inspection only. In order to make an informed decision as to whether to repair or replace the pool, the city should obtain a complete evaluation of the pool, not another visual inspection, and certainly not while the pool is filled with water in July. I encourage the city to have the pool evaluated by an independent engineer who has experience with historic pools and not by an engineer chosen by a consultant who has a financial interest in the outcome of the analysis. And I really encourage the city to have this evaluation performed before the pool is filled with water, like this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, my name is Daniel Mills. I'm from North Liberty. So a month ago, this council heard loud and clear from our community that we want you to move 1.6 million dollars from the police budget. This body told the community that you needed to hear more lest you move too quickly. So I ask you, what have you been doing to listen and learn from the community about this issue? In the interest of continuing your education, I want to share with you the comment that I did not get to share at the April 4th meeting. Too often, we turn to the police as the solution to every problem, even when we know that there are less costly and more effective and more dignified ways to care for our community. I'm speaking today because I benefit from unearned privilege and systems of racial hierarchy that can make Black, Indigenous and other people of color scared to voice their concerns in front of this council. We know their fears are real. Police have arrested two Black members of the TRC and the former chair was forced to resign. It's vital that this council deal more concretely with racial justice in Iowa City. Reducing the police budget is to act in solidarity with our BIPOC neighbors. Public safety begins with stable housing, having enough food to eat, and having your medical and mental health needs addressed before they reach crisis. The police are not the correct agency to address any of these issues. The more we demand from police, the less we are able to provide for the solutions that will prevent small, but very real problems from developing into crisis. More police does not mean more safety. It means more arrests as police make work for themselves criminalizing behavior in order to justify the money we spend on them. Forty-five percent of calls for service in Iowa City are initiated by officers. We don't need the police to tell our community what keeps us safe. We can invest the money we save on cops armed with deadly weapons into caring for our most vulnerable neighbors. We've seen positive changes from the Guideling Center, mobile crisis and permanent supportive housing. We can do more. The first step is cutting unfilled and unnecessary positions from the Iowa City Police Department. The money saved can be put to more effective use funding community mental health, food security, affordable housing and public health. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, another Daniel, Daniel Sands. I'm following up on comments regarding the budget, uh, for the police department. And I want to go ahead and share some public health data regarding policing. According to the Prison Policy Initiative, uh, during the earlier COVID crisis, or at least the earlier part of the pandemic, counties that had higher, uh, prison populations or people incarcerated had higher caseloads. Similarly, uh, if we're gonna talk about mental health, uh, in the study Geller et al. in the American Journal of Public Health, uh, young men 18 to 26 in New York City were assessed and found that men who had higher rates of police contact displayed higher rates of anxiety and trauma. If we're caring about our public health and our public safety, there is role or, there's a need to move that money to other areas. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to everybody that responded. We are right at our 30-minute max for public comments, so really appreciate everyone that came forth. We're gonna move on to item number eight, which is Planning and Zoning Matters. Eight A is rezoning 2640 North Scott Boulevard. I understand that, um, councillor Burgis will recruise herself at this time. This is an ordinance rezoning approximately 10.26 acres from low-density multifamily residential with a planned development overlay to OPD RM hyphen 10, I'm sorry, hyphen 12, for the purpose of amending the approved planned development overlay plan and sensitive areas development plan. I'm gonna open up the public hearing and welcome our staff Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle Sissman, Neighborhood and Development Services Coordinator. As you stated, this is a request for a rezoning for the purpose of adding additional multifamily, one additional multifamily, uh, building containing 16 one-bedroom units. The property is currently developed by Oaknell and contains three multifamily buildings and 60 senior living units. The site contains regulated sensitive features, including woodlands and slopes. Due to the impact to the sensitive areas, a planned development overlay zoning district or an OPD district is required, which is what, uh, it originally was rezoned to. And although the rezoning designation will remain the same, uh, low-density multifamily with a planned development overlay, the previously approved, uh, preliminary planned development overlay and sensitive areas development plans will be amended to show the new building. Such a change is considered a substantial change per city code and substantial changes, uh, must be approved by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. This proposal will also further impact sensitive areas, and I'll get to that in a little bit more detail in the presentation. So the proposed development is shown here in this pink building, uh, is located on the western property line of the existing property and the existing development. The parking proposed for this development will be provided off that existing drive and much of the parking will be within the multifamily building itself, except for some areas of parking to the north, uh, end of the property. This particular OPD rezoning, as I said, is triggered by the sensitive areas present on the site. OPD rezonings can sometimes include waivers to the base zoning, uh, standards, but in this case, there are no waivers, uh, being requested, um, to the zoning standards. So the only reason for the OPD is the sensitive areas. When we review zonings, uh, there are two criteria that we always review, consistency with the comprehensive plan and compatibility with existing neighborhood. But there are four additional criteria reviewed as well for OPD rezonings. So as far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, as with the past rezoning, the proposed development in this location conforms to the policies of the comprehensive plan, including the specific district plan, the Northeast District Plan. It's also compatible with the existing neighborhood character. Surrounding this property are developments, uh, both for office, uh, for the school district and ACT campus, as well as other senior, uh, housing and, uh, public park. The proposed building would be of similar character to the existing, uh, building and subject and similar to the surrounding neighborhood. Getting into the additional criteria for OPD rezonings, uh, the density overall is still well below the allowed, uh, density for this particular base zoning district. It would be 7.4 dwelling units per acre with the new development on it. So overall, the proposed amended plan continues to comply with the planned density requirements. And the land uses proposed are also, um, continues an existing pattern of development and is compatible with the existing land uses in the surrounding area. Regarding open space, the proposed development complies with both private and public open space requirements. They've done this previously, uh, through the development of their site and dedication of, uh, Fee and Lou, uh, through the previous rezoning actions. And the proposed development will not impact neighboring properties any more than a conventional, uh, zoning district would. Regarding mass scale and layout, uh, the proposed development remains consistent, as I said, with the existing senior living development on the subject property and additional future senior, uh, living development, uh, along Scott Boulevard. The proposed development meets all of the multifamily dimension requirements of the RM 12 zone and remains consistent in mass scale and general layout with the, the existing development of Oaknell. The proposed development be serviced by city water, storm sewer onsite and sanitary sewer already provided to the site. It's not anticipated to overburden the traffic system, internal private circulation or the utilities already in place. As I mentioned, there are sensitive areas present. They have been previously protected through the rezoning and planning process for this land. The specific sensitive areas present are woodlands and regulated slopes. So although additional impacts to sensitive areas are proposed, they are still well below the impact levels allowed by our city codes and our standards regarding sensitive areas. The proposed development, being located where it's proposed to be on the, uh, western edge of the property is actually minimizing those impacts as much as possible. So regarding the steps of development, uh, the step we're on tonight is shown towards the bottom of the slide in blue. As I mentioned, the site was previously rezoned, went through plating and subdivision, actually had site plans reviewed and building permits issued for the existing Oaknell development. So after this rezoning tonight, they would go back through those steps for this building, continuing through site plan and building permits. So based on our review of the relevant criteria for this type of rezoning, staff did recommend approval. At their meeting in April, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with that recommendation and is forwarding it to you tonight with a recommendation of approval as well. Happy to answer questions.
Here and none, thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Or is there a developer here that wishes to comment? We'll invite you up at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mary Teague and council members. Uh, I am Steve Rowe. I am Executive Director at Oaknell and I've served the Oaknell community for 24 years. Six years as Executive Director. The purpose of this project is really to add an assisted living, uh, building within our Oaknell East Campus. We purchased the property from the developer in 2019. As was, uh, shown on the previous screen, uh, the, the prior rezoning work happened in 2016 and 2017, uh, before Oaknell owned the property. Had we owned it at that time, we probably would have designed things a little bit differently, but we ended up, uh, acquiring something that was, uh, partially developed and just not yet constructed. It is, uh, important for us to add additional assisted living units, uh, for Oaknell in total. And it would be very beneficial for our Oaknell East residents to be able to age in place and transition from independent living to assisted living still at that same campus. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish with this project. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So currently, um, and I, forgive me for not knowing, um, on your, uh, original Oaknell campus, are there, uh, is there an assisted living?
Yes, uh, yes. At our, at our main campus, we have three levels of care. Independent living is, is the bulk of the building, but we do have about 40 assisted living apartments and a 58-bed licensed nursing home. The Oaknell East development was originally conceived as truly just being independent living spaces. And as we've lived that now for about two and a half years, uh, it just would be beneficial, we believe, to add that, that assisted living level of care at that campus.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, all right. Anyone from the public like to, uh, comment on this item? If so, please raise your hand. Anyone online? Seeing no one, before I close this council, um, are you all inclined to vote with PNC recommendations? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to get first consideration?
So moved.
Second, Taylor.
Well, by the way, second by Taylor, council discussion.
Well, earlier, um, this evening, I'd read the older Americans' proclamation. So we're hearing that our, that we have a large population now. It's growing, continuing to grow. It's growing, continuing to grow, and as a community, as Iowa City, we value our older Americans, and that would include assuring that we have some safe, comfortable, healthy places for them to live. So I admire what you've done with Oaknell. I live on the west side, and I've seen that campus just grow immensely, and people are happy to live there, and it's really great, and thank you for that.
Yeah, I would say that is, this is very valuable for the Oaknell community and beyond, right? The greater community to have assisted living beds, and I know that the folks that are a part of Oaknell, which that wait unless is long, I know, would appreciate having that opportunity. So thanks for bringing this before us today.
Many of my former neighbors live at Oaknell East now, and so I've had an opportunity to experience it there. It's a really beautiful facility. Thank you for your description of the history of the site because the, and noting that if you had been involved from the beginning, perhaps the site plan would have been adjusted a little bit. It's, it's a little bit tight, you know, where you kind of shoehorned it in there. But, you know, it's a needed element to that facility, so I will be approving it. Thank you.
I'm just going to say, I'm going to echo some other comments. I think this is an excellent addition to the community. It offers a lot of folks, you know, a new option on the east side, and I will be supporting. Thank you.
I think it's a fantastic way to make Oaknell that much more of service for its residents, and it is an ingenious use of land, given how the pattern of it is. But I think it's fantastic, and I'll be approving this, supporting it.
Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero with the one of recruiser by Councilor Burgess. And she is going to return into the room. Yes. Item eight B is rezoning JJR Davis Second Edition and JJR Davis Fourth Edition subdivisions located between Mormon Track Boulevard and Dane Road Southeast. Ordinance rezoning approximately thirteen acres of property located within the JJR Davis Second Edition and JJR Davis Fourth Edition subdivisions in between Mormon Track and Dane Road Southeast from commercial office zone to intensive commercial zone. This is second consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Alter.
And anyone from the public like to address this topic? All right, I see. Anyone online? All right, we'll have you all come up, and there's a sign in, and if you got one of the stickers, you can place it in the box. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Bob Dane from Iowa City. This was quoted last meeting regarding the description of CI one, intensive commercial zone. The purpose for intensive commercial zone is to provide areas for sales and service functions and businesses whose operations are typically characterized by outdoor displays, storage of merchandise, repair and sales of large equipment, motor vehicles, outdoor commercial amusement, recreation activities, or activities or operations conducted in buildings or structures not enclosed. Further reading in the ordinances, in the paper, in the city documents, you also have the categories of subsets: residential uses, group living assist, group living uses, assisted group, living, fraternal organizations, independent group living, household, attached single-family dwellings, detached single-family dwellings, detached zero-lot line dwellings, duplexes, and group households, multifamily, adult businesses, animal-related commercial, general intensive building trade, commercial parking, commercial recreation, indoor and outdoor drinking establishments, eating establishments, general office, medical dentals offices, and quick vehicle servicing, alcohol sales, delayed deposit service, hospitality services, outdoor storage, display-oriented personal service, repair-oriented sales, service passenger service, and vehicle repair, industrial manufacturing and production, heavy manufacturing, technical light manufacturing, salvage operations, self-storage, warehouse, freight movement, waste-related uses, and wholesale sales, community service, long-term housing, community shelters, daycare, detention facilities, educational facilities, hospitals, parks, open space, religious, private group assembly, and ground-mounted energy systems. So which of these would complement the Dane Family Park? Some would, others would not. By voting for this rezoning, you'll be adding thirteen acres to the land south and southwest of the Dane Family Park, already zoned CI one. Since the last county council meeting, billions has begun activity along Mormon Track between the Dane property and Mormon Track. Some, someone has a plan for this area. There are renderings on some wall. Does the city know what they are? With scooters on Scott Boulevard, the council knew the plan, and now for Oaknell East, you also know the plan. City parks close at ten-thirty, but those are only city neighborhood parks. Would parks and wrecks stay open later for solar events, special events, satellite viewing, fireworks, stargazing? City, excuse me, city park used to be used for overnight stays in Long.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I think we were out of cards here, so. My name is Steve Ballard. I'm a lawyer with the Left Law Firm here in Iowa City, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the George R. Dane Family Trust. I live in Johnson County. I want to thank the council for its commitment and dedication, service to the community. I don't come to very many of your meetings, but I appreciate your consideration, your deliberation, your patience, which you apparently have a lot of, and I appreciate that. Really, that's what I want to talk to you about. I was at the meeting on April four, which was by Zoom, and I was also at the meeting on April eighteen in person and had the opportunity to speak to the council. And I believe that there was, there was an impetus, there was a consideration by at least some people on the council, that some sorts of conditions might be appropriate to attend, to go along with this rezoning if possible, okay? And my main point, frankly, tonight is to not, to not have a procedural obstacle, technicality, call it what you wish, substitute the council's deliberation and opportunity to make a meaningful decision about regulating this zone, this rezoning, if it's going to happen, okay? Major site plan review. City staff at the last meeting went through what a major site plan review looked like. We ask that the council do something now to ensure that more than just institutional memory of current and future city staff are relied on to protect the rezoning intention of the council if the council is going to rezone. There was discussion about conditions. There was, I think it was a surprise to some people on the council, at least it seems as though it was to me, that a conditional zoning agreement couldn't be entered into by the time the council started its deliberations, and we were talking about that, because the public hearing had been closed, okay? I'm not sure the council knew that that's what happened when you closed the public hearing. The public hearing was closed on April four as well, but then it was reopened because council then remembered, or I don't mean it that way, but the council said, we need to consult with planning and zoning. And so the public hearing was reopened. We ask that you reopen it again. We ask that you consult with city staff about what you can do to reopen the public hearing, to pursue a conditional zoning agreement that might address some of the things that the council discussed on April eighteen. I don't know those, those options, but you have competent city staff and certainly competent city legal staff to direct you, and if nothing else, you could defeat the zoning rezoning request and start over.
Thank you. And I'll welcome the next person, and up to three minutes to speak.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Teague and members of the City Council. My name is Dennis Mitchell. I'm a trust officer. Now, I'm here tonight on behalf of the George Dane Family Trust to hopefully convince you to vote against the pending rezoning. To echo a little bit of what Steve said, I do appreciate how much time all of you have spent on this. I believe most and perhaps all of you have been to the property. Many of you have met with the Dane family members, and so we do appreciate that. I know we've submitted a lot of written material as part of our opposition, but there are a few just key points I wanted to try to emphasize or reiterate tonight. The first is that we believe the current commercial office zoning is much more consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the South Central District Plan, as well as the future land use plan than the proposed commercial intensive rezoning. So as noted in the South Central District Plan, buffer areas are important to mitigate potential conflicts between uses of different intensities and to preserve sensitive features. The South Central District Plan goes on to emphasize the importance of parks and public spaces and further developing such areas. Likewise, the future land use plan also supports protection and preservation of unique land like the future Dane Park. Unlike the proposed commercial intensive rezoning, the current commercial office zoning does provide a nice buffer area for this adjacent future park area, as well as the topography and views in this area. The second point I wanted to reemphasize was that no plan was included by the applicant with the rezoning request. If rezoned to CI one, the future use is almost certainly going to be much more intensive than permitted by the current commercial office zoning, and the applicant likely would have included a plan if it was going to be a less intensive use. Although we do appreciate council's direction to staff at your last meeting, if the subject area is rezoned, it's going to be difficult to limit the impact to the future park area as well as the neighborhood. Finally, I do want to emphasize that the Dane Family Trust is not opposed to the development of these parcels. We just firmly believe the current commercial office zoning provides ample opportunity for development without detrimentally impacting the future park, is more consistent with the comprehensive plan, and is in the best overall interests of the city. Again, we do appreciate the difficulty in making these land use decisions, and we do thank you for your time and consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Jane Dreskal, the eldest granddaughter of George and Marjorie Dane. I have been before you a couple times, and you've heard a lot from our family. Some of you have visited. Thank you for that. From the beginning, we have advocated to deny rezoning and stick with CI one or impose conditions on the CI one zone. Please continue to do that and not let them build whatever they want. At the moment, it's kind of a carte blanche, open, let you. Please focus on the ability to set some real conditions on this proposal. We ask for a middle ground of conditions that offer to meet the needs of our family who currently uses the property and our ability to enjoy that as a property owner, as well as the future users of the Dane Family Park. We can also enable with conditions to allow the owner of the adjacent property to also enjoy their property the way they wish. Furthermore, we request an amendment to the comprehensive and district plan to be updated so the future park is represented as it is a legal fact. You can help make this happen, and then it can be represented properly on paper and document for everyone to know that that is what's going to be happening on the Dane Family property, so with future discussions can be informed that that is the plan and mindful planning decisions can be made. Thank you again for all of your attention to this. It is obviously very, very important to our family. We have a long legacy in this community and of giving back, and we look forward to a time where the public can also enjoy the property that we have to share and my grandfather's dream can come to reality. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thanks to all that have come forth and shared during this time. I'm going to ask for council discussion at this time.
Eric, I was wondering if you could talk us through the situation with conditional zoning, if that's something that we can continue to pursue, or what is in the way of us going in that direction?
Well, Mr. Ballard was correct in the sense that you may recall the council closed the public hearing and reopened, but I would note the distinction is we did so immediately at the same meeting. I think that's very different than a context in which we would reopen a public hearing at a subsequent meeting entirely, when members of the public would assume that that public hearing is now closed. I've never heard of that being done. I would not recommend that council do that. If council is interested in that idea, I can research it more before the third reading, which of course will be required for this zoning to be complete at the next meeting. But at this point, it's not something I would recommend that council entertain.
Does it provide any risks of exposure to the city of any type, or?
Reopening a public hearing today? I'm not even sure procedurally how you would proceed. One of the risks would be, you don't want to, well, you would want to be very careful in defeating the rezoning request, because then any subsequent request would need to be substantially different in its nature, and I don't know if you want to foreclose that. So procedurally, again, I'm not really sure how you would go from here. Would you defer the second reading and at the same time set a public hearing on an item that hasn't been noticed up? Would you do it at the next meeting to set it for the yet meeting beyond that? I think it would be a very convoluted process that I would not recommend. And to answer your question about liability or risk, I can't remember the actual word you used, you know, obviously, there are owners of this property who have requested it be rezoned, and, you know, they may, they may choose a legal challenge if they think that we haven't followed procedures as is required.
I think that maybe just jog memories, that question was asked, like, can we put conditions on, on, on this project before we close the public, well, we had already closed the public hearing? And I think what we did, well, maybe we didn't, but staff came up and went through what the requirements are, and I think this council, the majority of the council, was comfortable with what those requirements were, knowing that it would meet some of the, the needs of some of the individuals that spoke.
I have a question, Eric, actually, and forgive me, I'm not going to get the language exactly right, but the request from the granddaughter, I'm sorry, I'm, I may, thank you, Jane, I apologize, about trying to get the Dane property included on what was it, the comp plan or the map, or what? That's, that's the piece that I'm confused about, but I guess I'm wondering legally about that since it is still within, I mean, it's still, it's, it's, it's family property. It is not yet a park. It is firmly in the trust that it will be, but it, is it possible to even do that since it is currently, it is private property that is being used as private property? Whether that can be included in a comp plan that would then designate its intention? I guess I'm just kind of confused about whether that can happen.
Well, certainly the council can amend the comp plan. My memory of the district plan that covers this area is that all of the, both the property that's before you to be rezoned and the Dane Trust property has a comp plan. and the Dane Trust property has a comp plan designation for, I can't remember the exact wording, but essentially CO and CI, you know, basically the two kinds of zones that are both at present and are being requested. If the question is, could this council change that district plan to account for the George Dane Trust property to be public such that that would be consistent with its use as a park? Sure. At least, I can think of no immediate reason why council couldn't do that in the future. But I also want to be abundantly clear, that's not something we do tonight.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, that's a very lengthy process.
Right.
I don't know when the district plan is next set for reconsideration. It's kind of old, but I don't want to speak for the planning folks as to when they'll be getting back to it, too. But that's certainly something that could be done in the future.
And then just as a memory refresher, all of the land except for that, the piece in question, is already zoned as commercial intensive, correct?
When you say all of the land?
Here's the Dane Farm, and then here's the hill down, right?
Right, all the, the kind of-
There's one sliver that is under consideration for rezoning right now because the rest is already rezoned as-
CI-1. Yeah, the property is kind of crescent shaped, going from memory again, to the south of the George Dane Trust property is already CI-1, as is the property to the southwest, again, going from memory, is already CI-1 as well. Of course, the property across the street, across Mormon Track also. Is that your question?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Can you speak to what direction city staff would need to start that change of the comprehensive plan and the South Central District Plan?
Well, I'm not sure any, frankly. Oh, to begin the process?
Begin the process.
Oh, sorry. Well, that would, I don't give them direction. That would go through the city manager's office, and I'd maybe better defer to him as to how long of a process that would be and what they're doing. I mean, that's a big job. Well, maybe I'll defer.
Yeah, the council has a strategic plan item to update your entire comprehensive plan, so that's our intention, but that's a multi-year process to do that involving a lot of public input. You could direct a comp plan change that would be initiated now, I guess, but I don't know that would be a wise use of time if your intention is to redo the entire comp plan with a process that kicks off later this fall. So if you do send us down that path, it's not just a text change to the code that's presented in front of P and Z and goes to you. That's a process that involves a lot of community input, not just neighborhood input, not just adjacent property owner input. You can kind of think of what we did with the Carson Farm area, the southwest district plan we last brought before you. That was a year-long effort to update the comprehensive plan for that portion of the community. So it just kind of depends on how you want to sequence that. But I would say if your intention is still to do a citywide comprehensive plan change, then I personally wouldn't move forward with a more surgical change just to reflect a potential public use on this one property in this district.
I would just say, you know, my thoughts on this, I think that's totally fine, first of all, waiting for the broader comprehensive and district plan update. But I think I should also explain more so a practicality reason why I think it would be important that this be considered and acted on in the rework of those plans. As we are all aware, it is pretty much set in stone in an irrevocable trust that this is going to be some type of park. That doesn't mean it is for Iowa City. It doesn't mean that it's for Johnson County. We don't quite know yet what is going to happen in that regard with regard to ownership management, et cetera. But we do know that it is going to become a park, so I think that it is, you know, pertinent to include that in our future planning. So I'm not going to ask for any direction or anything like that, but just want to express that that be taken into serious consideration when we get to that process in the city manager's office.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I wanted to just follow up on my comments from a couple of weeks ago, which, you know, where we did have a lengthy discussion of the possibility of conditions and landed on a, I was trying to recall exactly where we had landed, but, you know, it had to do with a major site plan review, as I recall, with the staff review. So I'm still, I think, as those of you who are concerned with the future of this project, am still concerned with the question of how do we adequately buffer the Dane property? But even more so that we have an issue, in my view, with the view sheds that are offered from that property. And wanted to kind of expand my thinking, anyway, in terms of what might constitute a response to those concerns. First of all, there will be, as I recall, Dane Road will be improved with this, with the eventual development of the property adjacent to Dane Farm. That public right-of-way offers opportunities for landscape, street trees, for example, to be planted as a kind of intermediate zone between the adjacent property and the Dane Farm property, which could contribute, I think, to the effort to buffer between the two areas. In addition to that, though, I would encourage the Dane family to think about how to address this issue of buffer and preserving and protecting the view shed by looking at opportunities for that on your own property on the, would be the west side of the property. That's your land, and it's, you know, I think, in my view, there may be sufficient space on that land to create a buffer that would, may not be possible beyond your property, on the adjacent property. And that's something you could begin right now. You know, if, in terms of site, vegetation, establishing vegetation, the sooner the better because it would certainly, by the time that development should occur on the other side of Dane Road, have an opportunity to mature. I think it would also offer some intention on the part of the Dane family in terms of that this is a future park. We'd like to initiate some improvements to the land which would anticipate how that future land will serve as a public space. And begin establishing the vegetation that would, in my mind, be associated with such a facility. So those are some of my thoughts, you know, in terms of how, at least from my standpoint, the concerns that I have could be acted upon in a more expeditious manner, under your own control, that would be consistent with the future use of the land. And also, in addition to the, you know, the view sheds and the buffering issue, the, you know, when I visited the site, it was a cold Saturday morning, and in part, it was cold because of those northwesterly winds that were running right over the hilltop there. So it would serve that purpose as well if you began thinking about, if this is going to be a public park, we probably will want to try to mitigate some of the factors that one experiences on that hill with respect to the northwesterly winds to make it a more habitable space. So again, the sooner those improvements are initiated, the better it will be for the life of the park at the time it becomes a park.
Thank you, Councilor Thomas, for your comments. You helped me remember that the day I was there, it was also cold and windy. And there were a group of 4-H students, I believe is what they were, that were, the snow, that didn't last very long, but it was a pretty heavy snow. But there also, they were, they were making grape wreaths out of the grapevines that are growing on the property, as well as some of the kids were actually sledding down the hills, great sledding area. So it just enhanced my belief that this is valuable property land for Iowa City to preserve as best as we can. And I think I made my thoughts pretty clear on how I, what I believe the effects of rezoning would have on the surrounding parkland at the last meeting. So I really won't elaborate much at this time except to reiterate that we currently don't have any parks that are surrounded by intensive commercial. And this just isn't the time to start even thinking about that. So I just still continue to believe that commercial office zoning is much more appropriate for this area. But if we do have to go down that route, we do have to consider the buffering. But I still believe in the commercial office zoning, and we'll vote this down.
We have a missing counselor. We're going to wait for Councilor Harmson to return before we vote. Oh, there he is. Hearing no more comments. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Harmson.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Item number nine is our regular formal agenda, which is 9A Utility Rate Public Hearing. Ordinance amending Title III Entitled City Finances, Taxation and Fees. Chapter IV Entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines and Penalties of the City Code to Increase or Change Charges and Fees. And can I get a motion to give second consideration?
So moved, Dunn.
Second, Alter.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or raise your hand if you wanted to. I didn't see anyone in person or online. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to one. 9B is twenty-
Seven to zero, right? I think I heard you say seven to one. I'm sorry, seven to zero.
Oh, seven to zero.
Yeah.
Item 9B, 2023 Bond Resolution. Resolution directing sale of $9,655,000 of General Obligation Bonds Series 2023. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Alter.
All right, and welcome our staff, Nicole.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council. So this resolution is for our bond sale that happened this morning for our GO debt. And Maggie Berger from Spear Financial is here to walk you guys through those results.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. We did receive bids this morning on the original amount of $9,655,000 of General Obligation Bonds Series 2023. Due to the premium that was provided, we were able to size the bonds down to $9,105,000 of principal that was borrowed. The original interest rate was a 2.85%, and in downsizing that, we are at a 2.8244%. We did show you that we have seven bids that were received. That's actually fantastic amount of bids for the timing and the market that we are looking at. We're really happy to report that the city of Iowa City has maintained its AAA Moody's rating. So we would like to thank your city administration, including your manager's office and finance department for their excellent work on the presentation itself and spending time with the Moody's analysts to answer any questions that they have. They did a fantastic job. So we've included that ratings report in for you in part of our packet, so you can review that. We've highlighted some of the areas. Robert W. Baird of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, is our low bidder. Again, there was adjustments made due to the premium that they were going to give you. You'll still be receiving premium dollars. And the final debt service schedule is really as we had projected that it would be. Interest rates started at 5% and go down to a 3% in the final year. We were projecting 5% all the way down. So we're very happy with the results. I'd answer any questions that you have, but we would recommend passage of this award.
Seeing no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please raise your hand, seeing no one in person or online. Council discussion.
Kudos to staff and Nicole in your office. This is a really hard climate to do this, and that there were that many bids speaks volumes to the sustainability and best practices of the office. So I just want to say thank you. It's not something that, you know, sort of gets like a lot of attention, and yet, without the work that you all do, we can't do, have a good functioning city. So thank you.
Great.
I'd also thank you about the AAA bond rating. I heard from many years on, my first few years on the council, from councillor memes, former councillor memes, about the importance of this and didn't really understand it till I've seen it the last few times, that how important that is to have that AAA and how few and far between it is of persons and cities and groups that actually have that AAA rating. So kudos on that.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 9C is TRC Consultant Contracts. Resolution approving consultant contracts with Kearns &amp; West, Think Peace, Healing Partners, and the three NATO partners to assist with facilitating the work of the Iowa City Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Dunn.
You guys are quiet.
All right, and-
We were told that we're quiet.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we're going to go to our staff, Eric Gores.
Thank you, mayor. So it's been a while since we've started this process, so I thought I would start with a very brief history, at least as it relates to facilitator contracts and so forth. On September 15th of 2020, council passed Resolution 20-228, which created the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, or TRC, gave them their charges and mandated that they be, quote, "facilitated by an independent consultant", close quote. On March 2nd of 2021, council approved a contract for Jesse Case to serve as a part-time facilitator at the rate of $4,000 per month for 16 months, so expected total of about $64,000. However, Mr. Case never signed the contract and terminated his involvement with the TRC approximately three days later. That caused the TRC to, again, begin their search for a facilitator. On September 9th of 2021, council approved a facilitator budget for the TRC in the amount of $197,907, which was the precise amount taken from a Kearns &amp; West facilitator proposal that they had been presented with and were working toward. And then later that month, on September 21st, 2021, in the face of vocal opposition seeking greater local involvement, council voted not to approve the Kearns &amp; West contract. So again, the TRC sought a solution for greater local involvement. This winter, a consortium of local and national consultants developed a new proposal to the TRC totaling just over $400,000, which the TRC approved. That proposal is what is before you now. First, I'll talk a little bit about the contract structure as, like many things involving this project, is not typical of what the city's done. Obviously, the whole notion of truth and reconciliation is novel to the city of Iowa City. In fact, it hasn't gone on a lot of places in the United States. And so we're inventing the plane as we fly a little bit, and that's true of all parties involved. So as I mentioned in the memo, which I prepared last week and which I discussed at length with the TRC at two of their meetings earlier this spring, the structure of the consultant agreement is unusual in a number of significant ways. Typically, we have a consultant, I'm sorry, we have an agreement with a single consultant. Now, that consultant may hire sub consultants or other subcontractors to assist them with doing their work, but it's clear that we're only contracting with one entity. It's that entity that is ultimately responsible for the work being done and being done well. And if it's not, then that's obviously that entity to whom we go and make sure that they get it done right. This proposal involves four contracts with, covering a total of four legal entities and three individuals who are all working together to do the work of facilitating the work of the TRC. In addition, oddly, or I should say unusually, the city staff will also have a key- In addition, oddly, or I should say unusually, the city staff will also have a key role in facilitating the work of the TRC. And notably, that's work including things like doing strategic doing and restorative justice processes that staff doesn't currently have the training to do. That's something that staff would have to go out and seek so that we could do our part under this proposal. We, the proposal calls for city staff to, quote, "coordinate operations of the four proposals," close quote. So it would be easy to imagine that staff will, or may, ultimately become the de facto general contractor or lead contractor, so that's just something you folks should become aware of. Also unusual is that what we normally encounter is we have a knowledgeable internal staff person, for example, an engineer in the engineering division, who needs some assistance designing a bridge or a road or some other public improvement project, and they write out very detailed notes about what they'd like for the scope of services for the consultant's work. Here, again, we don't have that expertise within city staff, and so we've had to rely on the proposers coming together and saying, here's how we envision it. And then also, they had some conversations with the TRC, of course, to make sure that they were on board with that vision, and that's what we've got, and obviously, we hope that it is enough. Just but again, because our role as staff is to alert you to potential problems in the future, I feel like we're not doing our job if we don't lay that out, that this is challenging, as with so many other things with this work that we're trying to take on. Finally, having outlined the potential challenges and so forth, let me be clear about our role, and it relates to what I just said. Our job is to tell you kind of what the issues are, the potential challenges that we might encounter, so that you are fully informed and you can make your own decision, whatever that is. I take no position on whether this should go forward or not, and I want you to know for certain that if you move forward with the approval of this contract, staff will absolutely do everything we can in our power to, you know, mitigate the risks that I've described and, you know, move forward with achieving the goals that you folks have laid out in your resolution to the absolute of our ability. So I want, I know that there's been some coverage in the media I read this morning that seemed to suggest that, or at least imply that, you know, we were, staff was opposed to the approval. We, no, not at all. I just want to make sure that you folks have all the information you need to make an informed decision, and that staff will absolutely do our level best to make it work. With that, I'll turn it, unless you have any brief questions for me, I know the TRC members are here, and I think that they wanted an opportunity to advocate for this contract.
Hello and welcome.
Hi, thank you. Well, first, I want to say good evening, city council, everyone in the public, and city staff. I want to thank everyone in this room for just joining us on this journey to make our Iowa City community a better place. I acknowledge that there are and will continue to be differing opinions and views on the best path to achieve this goal, and I'm so excited. I'm so grateful and hopeful because the passion filling this room shows that we are all truly on the same side. We want a better Iowa City community. Let me introduce myself again. My name is Chastity Dillard. I am the fourth chair of the Iowa City Ad-Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and I and my fellow commissioners, again, are so excited to present and recommend to the Iowa City City Council and wider community our proposed budget. With this budget, we finally will be able to carry out the charges of the TRC as dictated by you all, the city council, in 2020. I just want to remind everyone what our charges are. The first one is fact finding. Collecting evidence, including firsthand testimony of racial discrimination and injustices. True telling, providing multiple ways for those impacted and traumatized by racial injustice to share their stories and experiences. And finally, reconciliation. Involving the community in learning about these injustices and putting together recommendations to present to you, the city council. So as we all know, our community is in dire need of this work. This is why we recommend the following facilitator team comprised of highly qualified and experienced local, national, and international consultants. Those are Think Peace, Kearns &amp; West, our healing partners, and our native partners. It is no secret that it has been a long journey, a long struggle and time commitment for commissioners, our proposed facilitators, city staff, city council, and our community to get to this moment. This is a divided moment in more ways than one, as we've seen the fissures, we've seen the discussions, and the fights grow since day one. Still, we know that truth and reconciliation work will be more difficult in a place where it is more urgent and needed. This shows why Iowa City needs this team now more than ever. So again, my name is Chastity Dillard. I have been a resident of the Iowa City community since 2007. I'm a University of Iowa graduate, and I've been working hand in hand with those in need in this community for almost a decade. As an Iowa native, a woman, a black woman, a member of this community, and a black member of this community, I know what it is like to experience racial discrimination and racial injustice. I have witnessed the tolls it takes and how it can take on those experiencing the same around me, so I too am ready to do the work. Again, we are excited and ready to begin the work the council has, the council and the community has called for in 2020. City council members, I hope that you'll make that move, that leap of faith and continue this momentum our commission has created moving forward. The way I was imagining tonight, I was going to speak, and then I'm going to invite V. Fixmer Orais to speak on behalf of the proposal team, just to give an overview of the proposal's team vision for what is presented tonight, and then we have the rest, the remainder, the remaining of our commissioners, excuse me, I speak too fast, who would love to also advocate for why they believe that this is the work we need to be doing right now. So I'm going to let V. step to the podium.
Great, thank you, and welcome.
Hello, my name is V. Fixmer Orais. My pronouns are they/them, and I am here before you as the CEO and founder of SD Planning and one of the consultants in this proposal. I believe we were here in August at a work session, so it's really good to see you all again, and I just want to stress how powerful this work really is. I don't think any of us take this lightly at all. So you've seen the proposal, we've talked about the proposal, just to give a bit of a brief overview. So we are four different groups. We've been collaborating now for over a year and a half. Our proposal really is a community-led framework, and we like to talk about it as moving at the speed of trust, and that is incredibly important. I have been working in this community for over a decade, and I know so many of the people in this room and on, online, and I, I think that we can all agree that if this type of work and the power that it has for transformative healing, it has to be community-led. So that's why the framework is what we chose it to be. A lot of this is really co-creation with the TRC commission, with community members, and with our consultants. We do see this as a two-phase approach with evaluative breaks. We almost talk about it as like a sacred pause, an opportunity to reflect. What did we get right? What did we get wrong? How are we going to be moving forward? And those do include some recommendations, again, from the TRC, from, you know, the consultant team, and obviously, from the community as well. So as Chastity had pointed out, you know, the charges, you know, fact finding, reconciliation, those are the big, the big fact finding, healing, reconciliation, and education, truth telling. So when you look at our scope, and I do want to point out that, you know, these are, like I said, two different phases. The general outline is the first is three months, and then the second is four months. That first, that first phase is really the education. What is a TRC, and how, what is that going to look like for Iowa City, for our community? And Think Peace is an international-based organization, they are also in the United States, and they have a lot of that information that they'll be, they'll be sharing here, they'll be coming here, they'll be educating, they'll be training, sharing that work, and then also the fact finding aspect will be happening concurrent. To dig in a little bit deeper to the details, we do have some native partners, and I think we are incredibly, incredibly humbled and fortunate to have three facilitators who are willing to do something that I think is completely incredible. Taking the sacred native traditions, healing circles, and actually creating that for our community, for Iowa, and recognizing that instead of appropriation, we are going to be doing co-creation. That is just something that they see as a need for the healing, and so we're incredibly fortunate to have those partners. And then I am actually trained in strategic doing, and I know the attorney had talked about staff having to do that, so actually, I will be leading the strategic doing, so that is not something that staff have to be trained in. And then for restorative justice, our healing team is actually trained in that as well, so we do have facilitators in that. So I just wanted to clear that one point up. When you, you know, so there will be a deliverable that's, you know, obviously, I said we would have those check-ins, we would have those recommendations, you know, midpoint, and then after the second phase, we will have final recommendations. And, you know, this is just one of those things where we don't know where we're going to go, but we need to go together. So those recommendations, like I said, will be finalized and produced from the TRC from our, from our team. And when I say our team, I really want to stress, because I understand, I was sitting in this very audience about a year and a half ago, feeling like there was this outside company that was coming in to do work that I knew that we have the capability to do in our community. I know it because I've been a part of it and have learned so much from those around me. So I just want to say, when I say our team, I mean our community. There is funding in here, and to make sure that we have set aside for, for our community members who are leaders and who can do this work, who can do the fact finding and the truth, and who know how to do reconciliation. So we're not saying that we're it, we're definitely not saying that. We're just saying, can we get started so that we can bring others in? So this is an all and, I really want to stress that. There are many people in this, in this audience right now that I care very deeply about and that I know care very deeply about, our community and social and racial justice here. So with that, you know, there is a breakdown of costs, so you'll see, you know, Think Peace, Kearns &amp; West, Healing Partners, Native Partners, and then we have some community researcher also that's identified here, because we know that we have that capability within our community, that they're, they're very smart people here that know how to do fact finding research in our community. So you'll see the breakdown of that. The total is $402,721.20. That includes $10,000 that's set aside for local groups to step forward throughout the process, and then another $2,200 for a local facilitator, facilitator working with Think Peace. Think Peace's total is $96,169.50. Kearns &amp; West is $140,460.50. Our healing partners are $81,345. Our native partners are $50,446.20, and then our community researcher is $24,300. So you can see that there are those breakdowns there. I know that there, you know, there may be questions about all of that, and in your packet, you'll see that there's breakdown, there's line item breakdowns for, you know, everybody's rate, travel reimbursements, all of those things. So that is a general overview of the proposal that you have before you. Of course, I'm sure there will be many questions, and I know there are others that want to speak, but I just wanted to kind of make sure we were all on the same page and clear up a couple of the, you know, strategic doing and reconciliation parts of it, so that's what I have, and I think now we'll hear from the TRC commissioners.
Awesome, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Teague, and thank you, councilors, for giving me a few minutes to put my face in front of some of the councilors who don't know me. My name is Wongui, and I am one of the nine commissioners of the TRC. I'm standing here right now to support our recommendation of the facilitator to bring in the expertise that we, I don't have to put together racial injustices, experiences, and make recommendations to our city on how to move forward. Throughout, since 2021 April, I've been excited because this is a historical moment in the city I've called home since 2020, when I moved from my country of birth, Kenya. So as we work to get to this moment and present this to you, it's very serious for me because I have, and my ancestors, they've experienced racial injustice from Kenya to here in Iowa City. So as I work, and as we come to present this facilitator, I am also working with that pain, but with joy, that I have this opportunity. Then I also bring with me, I brought up my five children in this city, so there's that love, and I want my grandchild to have something better than I have had and my children have had. That thing I have brought in, and that's why I volunteered myself into the TRC, is that I teach racial social injustice and I research in that area. So as I present the recommendation, I have put doubt, tears, pain, but a lot of joy too. And as you deliberate and reflect and you consciously and intentionally vote on how we move forward today, either way, whether we go forward with the facilitator or we do not because of various reasons on how you vote, I will continue serving my city on making it better as far as we treat each other in my city that I call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, how are you guys doing today? My name's Cliff Johnson, I'm also on the TRC, and I would like to thank this, thank you all for this opportunity to actually get to speak with everybody. I really am looking forward to getting things rolling on the right foot. I feel like we have all the tools now, and we have the motivation to move forward and really get things done, and I really hope that we can make a strong impact here in our community. There's been a lot of work that has been done. It might not seem like a lot, but there is a lot going on, and a lot of sacrifice has happened from a lot of our members. With that being said, we really want to just do the right thing. That's what this is all about at the end of the day. We want to try to make sure that we help our community to the best of our ability, and we believe that you guys can help us with that right now. This is something that, like everybody's been saying, this is historic, this is something else. It has been done in many cities here in the United States, so there is going to be growing pains, there is going to be hardships, but at the same time, we can persevere, and we already are showing that we have the means to do it, so why not? I look forward to making sure that we make our place a better city. That's pretty much it at the end of the day, I don't really have much else to say. I have confidence that we'll make good decisions and do the right thing. I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Lauren Merritt. I'm currently living here in Iowa City and one of the last commissioners that came aboard the TRC back in October. Knowing that we were going to be looking at this proposal today, I was trying to write what I wanted to do and what I wanted to say, so excuse me if it's going to be kind of all over the place, but that's just kind of how my brain works, so. Iowa City, well, first of all, Iowa. My family moved to Iowa in 1978. This is my home, I love Iowa, and I've lived in Iowa City right after college for about nine years, fell in love with the city, and I was part of working with the flood recovery for Iowa City back in 2008 and years after that. And when I had my daughter, I knew that if there was any place in Iowa City, or Iowa I wanted to live, it was Iowa City. This is where my roots are now firmly planted. Looking at the time right now, the world, continent, country, state, county, city, things are looking kind of dismal. things are looking kind of dismal, to be honest. And we have an opportunity since 2020, when you started with the resolution to work on racial injustice, social injustice. And one thing about Iowa City is it's a diverse community. That's one thing that I love about it. But with diversity, you have different experiences. You have different opinions. You have very passionate people. And it's going to clash at times as we saw how the TRC went since its conception to now. But we all, even though we sound like we want different things, we want the same thing. And the way this proposal has come together finally, I think it shows all the influences of all the commissioners, also the community. This is supposed to be a grassroots movement. And even though the commissioners may be nine people, the roots extend out through the whole community and the city and beyond. So I know that we look at this, there was a million dollars that was allocated to work on this injustice, racial injustice. And at one time, it might look like it's a lot of money. And I know this is the taxpayers' money that we all want to use the most effective way and not just throw it away. And I think all our commissioners have kept that in mind, but also trying to figure out what is the most impact we can make with the money that has been allocated. Because in a certain perspective, a million dollars really isn't enough to do what we really wanted to do, if you really think about it. But I think we have to start somewhere. And I think that this community has so many resources to, at our disposal, to do this. We also need some experts that have had the experience of doing this. And I think that the facilitators that are on the contracts that we have will provide that training and present a model that we can not only use for this, but use in other areas of the city. That's one good thing about it is that, you know, it can be molded into the way we need it. And one thing I see for, at least the TRC as a commission, once hopefully we get this thing going forward, is being like the liaison between the community. Because we're the ones out in the street and hearing people who are having issues and want to be heard. And it's kind of a hard thing to do sometimes if you think that people aren't listening. Also, we might hear things but not listen very well. And I think that goes with not just what we're doing here, but anywhere. And I think that this model is going to provide that platform that people can speak, can hear, we can listen. We can look at what the city has, at its, at least the city has a government body, whatever else, and can help improve this community. As, I guess, when I first started on the commission in October, I will fully admit that I had a different idea of what the TRC was doing or what it was about. And I think the very first meeting that I was on was when the proposal was finally in its condition and people were ready to vote on it. And when I first looked at it, I was like, oh, this would not be the good thing to have the new person all of a sudden say, oh, let's put the brakes on this because I have some questions. But I basically decided to have faith in the people who were there. Over the time, I've grown to hear them, hear their experiences, which have been very different from mine in some ways, but very the same, you know, with certain injustices or whatever. But over the months now, we're at this day, and I have full confidence that this is something that the city, it's going to work. It's going to be, though things are going to change because we don't know what we're doing in the sense of this is going to be something new for here. But I have, we have a lot of people, I mean, not only in the commission, but here, who have a vision. And I think that this will be the platform that will get us there. So I hope that the city will take that into consideration and be ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Marie Krabs. I'm part of the commission also, of course. So just a little about me. So I'm also, so I'm new, right? And I came in with Ms. Lauren. And so I've had the comfort of watching and, you know, making assumptions and comments from the outside as things were happening. I was actually drawn to the project because of some of the chaos that was happening. That may sound strange, but to me, I was like, what is this powerful thing that's happening? That's got everyone so, you know, feeling certain ways. And there was, I could feel that there was passion there, right? Things are happening. So it actually is what kind of drew me in. Having that outside perspective and kind of watching from the outside, you can come in with a, with a different perspective, I guess. Maybe more, you know, it's objective to me, right? I'm, I'm not part of it, so I can come in with an objective mind and hopefully have something to offer with that. So with that being said, I think it's important that with the contracts, some of this is done with outside sources because of that objectivity piece. They're not aligned with, you know, a certain group or they're not aligned with a certain person or whatever the case may be. They're coming in, they're coming in to do the work. Of course, we need people in the community. That's obviously very important. I think we need both pieces there. And I, I really, you know, I encourage everyone to work together, together to move this forward. Again, I'm new, coming in on the backs of a lot of hard work and tears. And, you know, three years this has been going on. So I'm rolling in here. And everyone's already put in so much time, so much effort. My other concern is we've had people with these, you know, contracts there. They've been working for, for free, putting things together for free. They put a lot of time in and I hope that we can get moving and get things going. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Mohamed Traori. Honestly, I thought a long time about whether I was even going to say anything at all. I've been thinking about this meeting since, I'd say about November or December of last year. Pared back a lot of what I want to say, just keep it to the important pieces. When I joined this commission, I was 24 years old when it first started. I turned 28 this summer. The next item on here is about extending this commission to December 2024, at which time I would be 29 and a half years old. I was a junior in high school when Trayvon Martin happened. I just finished my freshman year of college when Michael Brown happened. There's more, of course, but, you know, goes on and on and on. If you do the math and extend back, that's from age 16 to today, of age 27. So essentially, my entire, most of my adolescent life and pretty much my entire adult life, I've just watched these occurrences happen on TV, be in the news. People talk about them, how much they care, how much they want to do something about it, whatever, 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 whatever. And none of it's true. And I say none of it's true because if any, if anyone actually wanted to do something about it, I feel like something would have been done by now. Yet, you know, you come to these meetings, you ask for people from the public to show up. You do everything you can. And next to no one comes. You know, you get some engagement here and there, which is great. But you then come to these meetings where your group has worked so hard to put a proposal in front of the city council, knowing that there's going to be people that are going to come after you and just look to tear all of you apart, tear your work apart, so you can't start any of it. And the thing that hurts most about that is that those people that could come after you and say those things, if they do, you know, we're all people, right? I hurt, you hurt. I go through things, you go through things. But I'm still likely going to have people come up after me and tear into us, even though we're one and the same. And that's just really unfortunate to know that. I've given up a lot being on this commission. Lost a lot of time with friends, that's for sure. Summer of 2021, actually, if you don't believe me, I can show you the records on my, you know, sleep app later. About four and a half hours of sleep averaged that entire summer. You mentioned, you know, September, when that proposal was brought up, I want to say two hours and 40 minutes or so was about how much I slept that night before we presented that to the council. And again, the seven pages of words and that entire line item budget that I'd worked on and created alongside the commissioners for that entire summer just got torn apart. And I had this kid that I'd honestly never seen before come in and talk about that piece with a thousand dollar stipends and had the audacity to come up and say, without ever coming to a meeting, without ever contacting me or trying to, even though my phone number was public information, even though I'm on social media, that we are not worth paying a dime. And again, I've never seen or heard from that kid again. I think, I don't know if it hurt more that I never heard from it again or it hurt more that it's this white dude that probably didn't care telling me I'm not worth a penny, even though I just, you know, done, put in all that time and effort all summer. To add to that, joint city council meeting, and I think maybe it stung even more of that, you know, the amount of just like ire and just discontent that has come has been really hard to stomach. A good friend of mine brings this up to me a lot. And I always tell him, no, don't do that. Like, I don't care anymore. I don't care anymore. And the truth of it is, is that I was lying to him. I did care a lot. And it's that I had someone stand over me in public and give me the, some of the ultimate forms of disrespect I've ever had, which was telling me after, again, all that work that was put in and knowing that I was again going to do work after that meeting, that if I want to get paid, go get a job that pays me. That was really crushing. So I say all that to say of, like, it's been really hard. It sucked a lot of energy out of me. I've watched my best friend since I was seven go homeless. And mentally, he's gone to the point that I don't really know that he recognizes me anymore. And so many of the times I'd see him was coming down here for these meetings. And then there was November 2021. My sister called me and told me, hey, can you please call me out of school today? And I asked her why. She said that some white kid posted on Instagram that he wanted to kill all of the N-words, you know, actual word, though, in school. So of course, I called her out immediately. But I don't know what stung worse, the fact that what happened in the schools when I went K through 12, in Iowa City community schools was still happening, or that kids were more bold about it, you know, doing that whole social media thing, or that I don't believe it was ever properly taken care of. Or was it worse that just three weeks prior, I had donated a thousand dollars to a scholarship to that very high school? I felt like an idiot. So I hope those that come after me, if you're going to come at the commission, honestly, please just either say it to me, address me, or here or outside of it. But please don't come at the rest of the commissioners. The reason I say that is the amount of times I've had to talk people off a ledge from quitting this thing has been insane. And at the same time, it was hard because I knew so many times that I wanted to do the same thing. And honestly, as I stand here today, I honestly have to say, like, I know this isn't the best place to do it, but my name is Mohamed Traori and I resigned from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. I can't do it anymore. I honestly cannot. People put me through hell for two and a half years. I cannot keep doing it. And all that time spent, all that sleep lost. There weren't people just hitting me up of like, hey, do you, 15, 20 minutes of stuff I can do for you, help you with, you know? Like, I know you got a job, you're working full time, you know? But still, you know, can I help you with this? Not really much of that. And, you know, other people are busy too, but I sacrificed. I took the time. So I just hope that, you know, everyone that wants to get involved with this or says they really care about this, really think about it. How much do you care? What are you really, you know, willing to do to get this moving, to get it going forward? Because last month, I missed a TRC meeting and I was really mad at myself for it. But then I sat back and I kind of laughed. I was like, wow, I'm mad at myself for missing this meeting. And you know why I missed it? I had just gotten eye surgery for retinal detachment. And I was upset I had to miss a TRC meeting. I'm also here today, even though I'm still kind of grieving. It's less than 48 hours ago, I found out that another close friend of mine from high school passed away. January, you know, another family member. July, that summer of 2021, two days after my birthday, find out my cousin passes away. And yet, you know, still putting in that work for the TRC constantly and having people tell us that we are not worth investing in. I kept all that back, all this time, because I didn't think it should ever matter. But I'm saying it now because even though I am resigning, you should all know, if you've been a part of the pushback, what you've actually been pushing back against. I have so much more I wanted to say, but I just don't want to call anyone out, you know, like that. You know, just keep throwing dirt on anyone's name, anything like that. It's not what I came here for. I just wanted to speak my truth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to have, I know you're going to come. Yep, please.
Taunse, my name is Sakawis Nobis. I am a commissioner on the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. And I'm here today to just be very specific about like what we're here to talk about, right? Like, we're, we're here to talk about- Like, we're, we're here to talk about approving these contracts so that we can move forward with the tasks that we've, um, been working on, uh, carrying out now for quite some time. So I'm, I'm just going to ask you that you please vote in favor of these contracts, uh, and that it might be some, it might be hard for some of you to do that, um, but I, I would like you to consider decolonizing your, your mind for a moment and taking a chance and doing something different from what you are typically told and thought to do in these spaces, right? Because these spaces have never been set up for us, which is why we have a Truth and Reconciliation Commission, right? So if you're not going to allow us to move forward and make these changes and be unique and take chances, then how are we going to do what we need to do? Because that's exactly what we are meant to do. So I would ask that you just really, really consider allowing us to take this one step forward, take a chance, and let us do our job finally, after so many years. You have seen people come up here just now who are literally feeling broken from years of having to deal with not just trying to get things passed, you know, through this particular council, but the fallout from a particular faction of the black community that has come after us over and over again. And like, we can't allow one portion of the community to affect the rest of us that are trying to move forward in unity. I will say as an indigenous person that the TRC has allowed me and the community to do things that I didn't think I could do here in Iowa City. You know, for instance, I watched my daughter, um, be involved in a very racist moment at Shimick Elementary, and because I had this ability to be, you know, to speak my mind, you know, clear and with a, with a, and, and testify, and with a group of people that had my back, we were able to make a huge change, um, in the, you know, the, the, uh, city of Iowa City Public School District. Um, you know, now there's going to be books that are going to be given to these teachers and training so that they understand like cultural, you know, appropriate ways to deal with indigenous peoples, indigenous culture, indigenous ways of teaching. Um, you know, tonight, um, this particular proclamation that I came up to, you know, to receive, that happened because I am on the TRC and that I felt empowered to be able to do that here, whereas before I didn't think that I really had a voice in Iowa City because indigenous peoples are a small population here. Uh, you know, also moving forward, you know, we're working on, you know, having an Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, you know, we, we are, um, getting heard more and more because we are a population that deals with exceedingly high rates of erasure, exceedingly high rates of whitewashing. And it's not just us, right? It's not just indigenous people. There are the Asian-American population here, there's the Muslim population here, there is more people here than just the black community that we need to consider. And that's why I ask that when you think about this and you, 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 you might hear things moving forward after I speak, where people are going to talk against, you know, voting for this, that you consider the work that the TRC has put into this already and that there are communities other than, like, some folks here that are going to speak against it that really need this very badly, very badly. I have never been able to feel heard in this city as an indigenous person until I joined the TRC. And I want you to remember that, that it's not just about one particular faction in this community that has power, that has political power and a voice. It's also about the people that have not been heard and that are getting heard now. So thank you very much. Um, please, you know, get this going, get the ball rolling, and we're going to do some amazing stuff. Ahai, kitatamahen.
Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to come and, come up again and say thank you so much for listening to us. As you just heard, all of us, we're very passionate people that are really committed to moving forward with what you have tasked us to do. Again, we hope that you choose to approve, um, our proposed budget so that we can move forward in the work. Thank you.
And now, this is an opportunity for the council to ask any questions to any other TRC members, any other partners, um, because once we're, um, once we're done with questioning here, then, uh, you all won't be able to come up and respond during the public comment. Of course, the council could still continue to ask questions when we deliberate. So wanted to just make sure that, um, the councilors knew now was the time to ask any questions to, um, our presenters today and our commissioners.
Okay, I'm going to leap right in. Um, so one of the things I'm curious about, and I've, I've heard some, but I would like to know, what role do you as the TRC envision yourselves taking in, you know, the contracts, they have to be, you know, they're very out there and this person, that party, and this, that. What is the TRC going to, what roles are you going to play?
As commissioners.
Yes.
Awesome. So, um, I will speak on, on my behalf, and then I'll have maybe some other commissioners that might have a different viewpoint. The, the beautiful thing about this proposal is that it could be anything, but the one thing I do know is that we are going to be very involved. We can't do anything until we have a budget to move forward. As many other commissioners have said, uh, we have people reaching out to us weekly, asking if we can help them out, but we can't move forward until we have a budget so that we can discuss the, the correct protocols, um, so that we're not putting anyone, um, in danger of defamation or libel, so that we can make sure that we're not re-harming anyone, um, re-traumatizing anyone. But as I can say, we are committed to be, being a part of this process wholeheartedly. We just need the experts to be here for us. Does any fellow commissioners like to also chime in?
This is Lauren Merritt again, um, vice chair. I see the TRC commission or TRC being two different things, because right now, we need to, like I said, create this model, work with the facilitators to figure out how we are going to allow people to speak their truths, do the reconciliation, and figure out how to close the gap between the who, the cause of the injustice, whatever else, and the people who are the, consider the victims. So we are going to be working with the facilitators and the community to figure out what this model is going to look like. Once something is hopefully in place, um, I think they're moving along, I mean, the commission is probably going to change. I don't know if we're going to end up having, proposing to the city to hire somebody to be that contact, um, with the model or whatever else for the city, or hopefully, if things are going well, you don't need the commission, because that's, if we're not having injustice, that's, you know, kind of the goal, which obviously is not maybe the most realistic, but once we get the platform, then we're going to look to see what is the need for the city for us, what is the need for the community for us? That, we can't necessarily see what that picture is until we have the model. But, so it's going to be fluid, and we're going to take advice from the, uh, city council, advice from the community, advice from the facilitators, and figure out what will be the best role, the most effective role the TRC can be for the city and the community.
Thank you. And what I will say is, because we want to make sure that we allow time for the, uh, community to speak as well as the council to deliberate, but please go for it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, I think that the, the council, the city council should know, like, what we are supposed to do, right? Because we were charged with a task, and we'd like to carry that task out that, you know, was set in front of us in the first place. So that's what we're here to do. Um, we are, you know, leaders in our communities, uh, we are touchstones, we are people that understand what's going on, uh, based upon, you know, living and working and being in our communities, because we are, you know, um, a black and indigenous and Latino and Latina and, and Asian-American, because we are all those people. Um, and so we are here to represent, you know, those communities, and we're here to move the process forward. And as that process unfolds, you know, like, yes, again, like, it might, um, you know, change, um, but, uh, right now, we, we are those people that understand best what our people need, um, our communities are looking, what our communities need to get to heal. I was part of a truth and reconciliation process in Canada. Um, I'm First Nations, my whole family, um, were, was part of the residential school system, uh, and it changed our lives. Uh, and so I know firsthand, like, how, uh, healing this can be and what it can do to, to make change, positive change. So, um, I, I can say that, um, very positively that this will do a lot of good in the community.
Thank you. I wanted to just have, um, oh, sorry, please.
I'll keep it short and sweet. Um, things cost money, we all know this, uh, and we have a job to do. If we get the proper funds, we can do it. Uh, this is something that's new. Uh, we aren't expected to know everything, so we got the right people to help us out with it. Uh, there is, this is only a positive, that's it. This can only grow to become something better, but we have to actually get to start it and actually do it. That's the only way for it to actually happen. There's, there's a, there's growing pains when it comes down to everything, but, uh, we're a strong enough city, I think we, we, we're fully capable of it. So I, I just hope that we can make the right decisions and, uh, we're not going to please everybody. That's not what this is about. This is about taking care of a job and getting a job done. And, uh, that's, that's all I'm about right now. I'm just ready to go. I say we get this done, once things start rolling through, you know, we'll make moves, we'll make mistakes, but then we'll fix them. And that's, that's life, that's, that's, that's living. So I hope that we can do better.
Thank you. I wanted to have Chair Chastity come up. I have, uh, um, some questions for you. Um, so I know that we had a conversation, uh, I don't know, was it yesterday or Sunday? I have no idea. But one of the, during our conversation, um, there was questions about, I, I had brought up, because someone had contacted me saying that there was folks wanting to come and shut down the TRC, and you heard that. And, and what I told you during that time is that there's a lot, I've heard from a lot of people in the community, and no one was talking about shutting down the TRC. Um, so I, I wanted to just, because I'm hearing a little bit from the TRC commissioners, because you heard that, do, were any of that shared with the individuals? Because there's a lot of hurt that I hear going on from things in the past.
Just so I understand, you're asking me if I, um, communicated what our conversation was with the rest of the TRC?
Yes.
Of course I did. I absolutely shared, um, all conversations I've had with all council, council members because we want to be open and, you know, make sure that everyone knows what's going on. Um, I believe that my passionate colleagues, my commission members are reflecting on the hurt that they've, they've experienced on their own. I can't, um, you know, stop them from talking about how they feel.
Sure, sure. Um, I'll deliberate a little more on a lot of things that's going on here, but, um, I, I at least wanted to just set the stage that, um, what I've been hearing from a lot of people is they, they want to engage with the, with the TRC in this process. Can you tell us, um, what are some of the things that you all have done to reach out to, um, people, um, that are in this room? When the commission, when the council voted in, on September of 2021, there was, um, a directive that they gave, and it was really the majority that didn't, you know, it, that it didn't pass. And it was to engage the, the community. Um, and I want, maybe if you can address that briefly on how you all have engaged the community, and I know that your desire, because I heard it at a lot of your meetings, that you all really, you know, have, wanted to have public input.
Right, of course. Um, forgive me if I'm forgetting exact dates, um, but after that, you know, disappointment for us in 2021, um, a, a couple of us did go out and reach out to a local group and had conversations with them, um, not once, but twice, maybe three times. Um, I, I do, like I said when I first spoke, um, we don't always see eye to eye, um, because everyone has their own beliefs and, you know, passions on how we can move forward, which is okay. Um, we've also individually engaged with other parts of the community. Um, I work for a local nonprofit, and I've talked to people in my own nonprofits and people in my, in those communities, just talking to them about how they would like to be engaged. I mean, there was a situation where, um, our entire group decided that we wanted to create a list of connections, uh, people we wanted to connect with, um, over the next year. I believe that was December of 2021. Um, and then that's when we started jumping into another phase of how we can recreate this facilitation, facilitator project.
And were those people on that list contacted?
Yes, of course.
In what way?
Yes.
Okay.
So we all came together, we said that we reached out, and those people, those, the list, um, some of my commissioners might need to remind me how many, it was at least ten to fifteen, um, local entities that said that they would be happy to work with us once we figure out what our, our proposed budget is going to be, what our plans are going to be moving forward. So we've just been waiting until we can get the budget passed so that we can move forward in that way.
And then the last thing I'll ask, because I know we probably need to get, move into the next phase, is, um, we know that there's been a lot of turmoil, right, over the?
Yes.
Um, but what I will say is with the last term, you know, um, challenge, um, I got a sense from a lot of individuals that I've talked to that there was a, a bit of reconciliation starting and a healing starting. People were talking to each other. Um, as I see it, people have been very calm, and, um, what I hear now is people that I've talked to directly, um, that they want to engage with the public, so, I mean, with the TRC members, the public, the, they want to engage. And so I feel like we're at a different time, whereas you all, as you mentioned, you're, you, you wanted to reach out to the community, but maybe during those times, it was so much turmoil and things happening that it wasn't successful. My question is, since the last turmoil where things have kind of, I would say turned around for good, for the community, lines of communication, has there been any outreach directly to some of those people that were there? And, you know, when the council voted that your last proposal down, has there been any contact to explain your, your budget proposal?
To explain the budget proposal?
Or, or how they can be involved?
Um, I mean, after?
Since the last turmoil?
Since their last turmoil, which happened last August, um, and was quite the whirlwind, might I add, um, we, uh, engaged with the community involved and asked them to participate in, uh, some circles with us. Um, I know that that did not happen. We did our own circles because we were about a restorative, um, justice practice. And then when we finally got, uh, presented the, the contracts and the proposal in December and January, um, we have not fully reached, actually, no, that's not true. We have talked to, uh, a couple of community members, um, in April, about, when they came forth to us, about what we had already agreed to in January.
All right. All right. If you have a comment, sure, thank you for your, for your comment.
Okay.
All right, yep.
Just have a follow-up comment to that. While I was still on the commission, uh, there was actually far more outreach than that done. Um, so me, myself, personally, I've actually had multiple members of the community ask me about financial education programs, for example. So I've had a few friends of mine that I've been talking to about this for quite some time, uh, actually started a podcast and newsletter around it, but again, you know, TRC stuff, people coming in, bogging stuff down, you know, you can only do so much when you also got a full-time job, you got no staff helping you out with this stuff. So unfortunately, that was rough. Um, but, um, when it comes to, uh, school outreach, uh, I've actually volunteered for, like, week-long, uh, summer camps, for example, actually volunteering for another camp next week on Monday here at Merge, Design Dash, teaching kids about business startups, things like that, so that's been interesting. Um, the last few weeks, I've been going to a lot of the local track meets, actually part of why my voice is a little weird is I was at Drake Stadium last Saturday cheering on the City High four by eight hundred, that was great. Um, you know, ran, ran there as well. Uh, just wish I could have actually been coaching them, but unfortunately, you know, some of that outreach was stifled again by TRC budget, getting nixed, not having staff to help out, so, I mean, not having that extra time. So there's a lot of outreach that's been done. That's just, you know, a little bit of the outreach I personally have, but.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we're gonna, are there other questions?
I, I do have, I don't want to derail the conversation, though. I would love to revisit it, um, the issue about, uh, that was brought up in the city memo, but I've, I had a chance to talk about with some of, some of y'all about the, um, issues of, uh, liability for things like libel and slander. And some of you I had the chance to talk to, I was looking at stuff, to make sure everybody has the full context, one of my reasons I'm very interested in that is because in my previous life, I spent over a decade as a journalist, as a reporter, and as a news director. And so drawing from that experience where the daily, you had to kind of understand how those laws worked, where the boundaries were, what the defenses were, um, and also there's some differences, right? Because that was a private enterprise sort of thing versus a city And also, there's some differences, right? Because that was a private enterprise sort of thing versus a city commission. So, not, I'm bringing this up purely as a, how do we make this work? Is it possible to make this work? Kind of a question, not a, I think this is already like a decided no kind of question. But I do think it's, 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 it's an important thing, and Bee?
Yeah, hi. Actually, I was wondering if Eduardo from Thinkpeace is online? Is that possible to pull somebody in from online?
Sure.
Thank you.
Welcome, Eduardo.
Thank you, Bierdick. Thank you, everyone. I have been following the conversation.
Thank you, Eduardo. Thank you, by the way, for that email, Eduardo.
Oh, yes, of course. Well, as you know, it has been a few years following the conversation in Iowa City. Sometimes with this instrument soon, sometimes in presence. And this issue, the question of uh, expenditure to libel for a TRC is something that emerges from time to time, not just in the case of Iowa City, but in all truth commissions that I know. The reason is that a truth commission is a very different animal from the kind of organizations that we have created in the past. It is not a court of law. So the allegations determining a truth commission do not carry the authority that would have, for example, concrete indictment in front of a prosecutor. It is also not just a civil society organization. It's not just, you know, a, a press company that is exercising its right to inquiry on something. It is something else. It is something different. It has been established by the city council. It is normally established by a regular authority, but it is composed by members of the public. And, and so what would happen in a TRC is that people will come to talk about the events that left a traumatic imprint in their lives. So for example, finding instances of discrimination, having a traumatic interaction with a public servant that the person believes has to do with racial discrimination and so on. So is it likely that the conversations in the TRC and the testimonies in the TRC are going to be tough, are going to be harsh, are going to be emotional? Absolutely. That is going to happen. Does that mean that they are going to be legalists, that they are going to defend persons? No, that's not the case. The reason why is because the TRC should not act in a completely spontaneous manner. I don't think that TRC is just open dermities for anyone to come and, and expose probably events that were incredibly traumatic without any kind of preparation. On the contrary, I think that when the commission organizes its hearings, it should, first of all, do a careful selection of the cases and situations that are more illustrative of patterns of racism, of patterns of injustice that it wants to address. It should work well in advance with the persons who will present testimony, to ensure that these persons understand the context of a truth commission, that they are psychologically prepared to participate, and that they understand, of course, what are the rules, the parameters, the possible limitations in any public intervention of this kind. I myself have participated in a number of truth commissions. I personally organize the public hearings of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of my country, Peru. And in the case of Peru, we advised about 200 individuals who participated in public hearings that, since the commission was not a permanent institution, and the commission was not a court of law, right, and there were, of course, parameters and limitations on what we advised them to do. We advised them not to mention names, because that would indeed possibly expose them to, to judicial repercussions. And for the most part, they followed the advice. In some cases, though, they did mention, right? The names of the persons they believe had committed acts of torture, executions. I mean, we're talking about a country that had an internal conflict with 69,000 people killed. So some of the witnesses that came to this stand actually did mention generals, colonels, ministers, presidents, and so on. But we were talking about issues of such historical importance for our country, issues that were so notorious in our history, that we didn't have a single case of a powerful person feeling himself or herself aggrieved and bringing a lawsuit against a witness at the truth commission. That never happened. I think it has to do with the fact that the commission worked with the witnesses in order to organize presentations of their experiences that were constructive, that were, were substantiated. And in fact, many of the cases that came before the public hearing ended up eventually as indictments against very powerful persons in the country. In your case, this is a truth commission not of a country scale. It's a truth commission in a smaller community. The situations that it confronts are not an internal conflict like my country, but are really serious issues anyway, and very painful issues anyway. I mean, we are not even at the point of getting public hearing and public testimony from persons aggrieved in the public, and you can still feel already the passion, the pain, the difficulties within the commissioners themselves. So precisely because these commissioners know how difficult it has been, I, I trust them to carry out a careful process for hearings, for testimony, so that neither them, nor the city, nor the, particularly the survivors themselves, are going to be exposed to any kind of legal jeopardy.
Thank you, thank you for that. And just to be clear, in, to, to, to my core, those are stories I think are important, and, and want to hear them come out, just don't want to give a bad actor an opportunity to do something that would be cashing in. So, example, John Doe is a, is a horrible racist landlord, and somebody comes forward in a process like this and says, John Doe's a horrible racist landlord. And, and I believe that anybody that's like that should be held accountable. But if we can't, you know, prove that, that's when it gets into the libel area. And so that's, so I would hate for John Doe, who is a bad actor, to walk away with a, you know, see the city as deep pockets, walk away with a paycheck. Eduardo, what I hear you saying is, and this is actually one of the things in our discussions I'd had with, with a couple of the TRC members and some of the partners, is whether or not you can, because you want people to come up and give their authentic, if this process is to work as described, people should be able to come up and give their authentic, their story, and be able to talk about their trauma. And so one of the questions that I had had was, can you tell somebody who's relaying their trauma and wants to do so honestly to, you know, what they can and can't say? And what I hear you saying is that's actually, within a very narrow parameter such as don't mention names, is something that, as part of this process, that's acceptable to do to somebody who's coming forward. You know, and so, so that gets a little bit to that, you know, and some of the other stuff too, you know. And that's important, because I, I noticed too, in, in some of the, the learning I've done on this, other places, there have been immunities set up to protect against this kind of thing. We don't have that luxury. Now, again, I think getting the stories is really important. I just want to make sure we do so in a way that we're not opening up and letting a bad actor profit, or, or derail this process, or, or something like that. Or have that become what people remember, not the fact that there are, you know, stories that would come out from members of the community that are important. So, so everybody knows that my motivation for that is, is not that I want to stop those stories, I just want to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up to liability, so.
Yes, if I may, thank you so much for, for that observation. I think this is, you have hit the nail on the head. Yes, of course, the commission should be protected against this kind of bad actors or frivolous action. One way commissioners have done this in the past, in comparative experience, is that they need to have certain basic protections for due process, even if they are not a judicial institution. So if you have a place where people make allegations about, for example, this kind of mistreatment and, and abuse, the minimum that a commission should do is to prepare in advance, before they, they air their story, and contact the persons against which any adverse mention is being made, so that these persons have the opportunity to respond. This is why, for example, we in the Portland Truth Commission gave also the opportunity to generals, to ministers, to come before the commission and clarify any indication that they, any situation in which they had been adversely mentioned. Most truth commissions that I know have done that. In fact, another important protection is that when the commission writes its final report summarizing its findings, it should also reach out to persons or institutions that are being adversely mentioned, to receive any kind of answer and response, and should be fair in the treatment of those responses. The other thing is, can a person have an authentic, solid, effective testimony without mentioning names? I think yes. And the reason is because we know that in the experience of recounting trauma, and recounting episodes that have been challenging in your life, a person goes through different phases. And several elements from the experience of trauma inform the narrative. How do you feel? What were the consequences in your life? What events? How did you experience the events, et cetera? And not all of them have to do necessarily with the person, the institution that committed the harm. And so, I think there are forms that can be drawn, always of course, with the consent of the person who is speaking, to analyze their story.
Hey, Eduardo, Eduardo, I, I think the question has been answered. I'm gonna say thank you for your response. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eduardo. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much to you.
Yep, and I, I'm gonna have you respond, and then I'm gonna ask the counselors if they can hold off on questions, because we can still ask the, you know, any further questions, but I want to get the public up and speak.
Yes. This is Lauren Merritt again. One of the things I expressed, actually, as a commissioner at the meeting, was that very thing, because I have a, I have a legal background, and also working, you know, with municipalities and, and knowing about, you don't know what someone's gonna say, and once it's said, you can't unhear it. And one of the things that, the plan with trying to figure out how are we going to get the truths, I get the messages from the, the people, but also knowing that certain things spoken are, it's public, a public record. And one of the things we're part, try to formulate is what is the best way that we can get this information, also realizing that the TRC is actually, it's an arm of the city, and so that we have to take that into consideration. So that is already something that's been brought up, and will be taken into consideration when we formulate how to get this and get it out while still thinking about the, the liability risks, that kind of thing for the city.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I want to get a show of hands, and I know some individuals have stepped out of the room that want to be on this agenda, or may, may want to make comment, but I want to get a show of hands on everyone in the room that wants to make a comment, because we're gonna be opening up the public comment. So let's see, two online. I think we can, I think we can do three minutes. And just know that if I feel like we're getting more people jumping in, I may have to drop down the minutes. All right? So I'm gonna just ask that people sign in. There is a, yep, Annie, if you can be my, yep. There's a sign-in stickers for individuals, where you can have that ready, and you can drop it in the box when you come. Although there is a sign-in sheet at the podium, and so I'm gonna go online first to Eloise, Eloisa. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Eloisa Roach. I am a citizen of the Shawnee tribe, and I've lived in Iowa City for six years now. I wanted to talk about this specifically as like an indigenous community member. I think the, the part of the budget that specifically contracts indigenous consultants is incredibly important, and I really want the council to pass it. They, indigenous people have like a specific knowledge base, specifically these consultants, that needs to be represented in our community. And while I understand that these people are not members of the Iowa City community, they don't live here. They are members of the state of Iowa, and their tribes have historic connections to this land. So I think they count as a local member of this community, and I think it's really important that we understand that the practices that they are using of talking circles and the reconciliation process is representative of practices that are native to the lands that we are on right now. And it's important that we have indigenous representation in the reconciliation process. And we can't get that just from Iowa City, because Iowa City is not a good place to be for, as an indigenous person right now. And through the Truth and Reconciliation Commission and these native consultants, it is going to get better for us. As a youth and a community member, I've seen how important is that the TRC continue to do their work. When me and a few other native youth, one of which being Sekahus Novas's child, expressed that we had experienced racism from our school district and our communities, the TRC provided support in our conversations with the school board and the superintendent. That was really important to me, because it's, it's difficult to articulate your opinions when you don't have adults and people who know what they're doing surround you. I'd also like to say that the state of Iowa is becoming an increasingly difficult place to live in as a native person, and just like a marginalized person in general. So I, I think it's necessary that you, as a council, support the commission in their efforts to continue to work and provide support and data for historically marginalized communities in Iowa City. And I hope that you approve this budget in its totality. Thank you, Niawe.
Thank you. And I'll ask those that are present, just feel free to line up in the middle. And if you're remaining seated, just raise your hand, and I'll call you up whenever. But yeah, if people can line up in the middle that want to speak, and for those that want to remain seated, just raise your hand, and I can call you up. But welcome. Please state your name and the city you're from.
My name is Tracy John Sargent. I'm from Iowa City. I wasn't actually gonna speak, but I've been inspired or motivated to just say a few words. Some of you know that I'm founder and executive director of a nonprofit here in town, and I understand that the work is hard. My blood pressure's been at like 120 since this whole thing started, and so I can appreciate how stressful it must be to do the work that the TRC is doing. I can tell you, as an individual that self-identifies as a community advocate, and somebody that does work that's focused on racial equity and social justice, I've never been approached by anybody on the TRC, and that bothers me. It's a little disconcerting. I'm not saying that I'm important. I'm not saying that I need to be involved, but it does seem a little strange to be a black man in this town doing the work that I do and to not be approached by anyone. And I've heard repeatedly that you didn't come to the meetings, you can come to the meetings, and I think that's a dangerous perspective to have, that you expect everyone to come to you. As a commission, you need to get out into the community and do things. I'll end with saying that for the last four days, last week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, I had an opportunity to be in Minneapolis, and I attended the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. And while I was there, I had an opportunity to meet Dr. Love Jones, who's the director of human rights for Greensboro, North Carolina. And I very specifically asked her about their project for the TRC, and I wanted to get her input on what worked, what didn't work, what they wished they had done differently. And I have a meeting with her later this week to get as many of the gory details as she's willing to share. That was an amazing opportunity for me, and it's one that I decided to incur that personal expense to go there, so that I had an opportunity to network with other people that are public administrators that look like me. They look like you, and they're doing the same work that we're trying to accomplish here. And so I would encourage us to reach out to neighboring communities that have already started this work, to understand what they've done, to better get some understanding in terms of what would work and doesn't work, so that we can avoid some of those same pitfalls. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will go online to Ryan. Welcome, Ryan. I will go in. I will go in person, Ryan, put their hand down, so, yep, and people can line up. I know that Mrs. Coleman was up, so we'll go to her next, but we'll go here. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for this great opportunity. My name is Simona Sally, and I am originally from Romania, and my kids are half Sudanese. And I am an active member of the community, and I'm here today to tell you that I heard about TRC just a few days ago. So I am so, I'm so grateful to see that people really care about our city, and they have so much passion. But what I'm here today is that I want, I, I want to ask you to, to not approve the budget until everybody hears about it. Because if I didn't hear about it, imagine our community, because I am sure, I'm 100% sure, there are many, many members of our community, they, they don't know about it. And I, I see that everybody, and I'm sure even the TRC probably they have a good intention, but one of the things that they are not doing is reaching to everybody. So I would really appreciate if you are, you know, just, just give us a little bit more time so we spread the word and we just go from there, because I, I am sure that we all want to have a great impact on our city. And thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ryan online and then to Mrs. Coleman in person, because I know that I saw your hand, so, Ryan online.
Yes, thank you very much. My name's Ryan Spargatas, I'm Iowa City resident. I'm speaking to voice support for the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and I encourage the council to vote in support of them continuing their work by supporting this proposal. It has been really moving to hear from commissioners and, and community members tonight, to hear the work that has already been done in the space they've provided, and I think we're hearing some of what is possible from this being meaningfully supported. And I do think that the city should provide that support. As has been spoken to tonight repeatedly, on and off this topic, issues of racism in the carceral system, issues of racism in the access to services and supports, these are more continuing in this community. And I think they should make it clear the work remains relevant. The TRC has been tasked with the mission to tell the truths and to aid in the work to seriously address what can be addressed locally. And again, they should continue to be supported in that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Coleman, welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
My name's Marion Coleman, and I am from Iowa City. I came to Iowa City when I was 23 years old. Last week, I turned 80. During the time that I was here, I served as executive director of Equity for the Iowa City School District. I also served as a federal compliance officer for all the schools in this, in this community for 40 years. So I am familiar with many of the stories that I heard tonight. But what my problem is, is not the TRC, it is civility. And I believe that if we are going to be successful, the TRC should hear the real truth before the reconciliation. Because the truth is, if you don't know how to approach people, I was approached here already tonight, it's given me cause a pause about how I could trust to go and see them. I have kids here, I have grandkids here. So my feeling is that we have worked in Iowa City. It's not like we've been sitting back on our hands blowing smoke. It's a process. It changes every time a generation changes. It's like the school district. Every time I had new administrators come in, I had to reteach, I had to let them know what our rules were and how we processed whatever happened in our district. We had complaints, we had a complaint procedure. One of the ways to deal with that is to write that complaint procedure down and let people know that if you commit to filing this complaint, we will commit to looking into it, to investigating it. I'm just saying, there are a lot of people around here who have done a lot of work. I mean, my hair didn't get this gray, just being in Iowa City. My hair got gray because we had to fight too. We had to make sure that we were in place. Tonight, I got told that I had, because I'm a member of, by voices, that I had hurt somebody. Well, that's pretty much slander, because I have, I don't, I didn't even know the lady, you know? So I'm just saying that, before you move forward, there are some things I think should be in place. I think, first of all, there should be some rules. You guys have ethics rules. We have ethics rules as administrators. People should be ethical, even if they don't work for an organization. But the ethic rules that you have, these are agents of the city council. These agents of the city council can cause you some difficulty if you don't put in place things that they need to be aware of that would harm your organization. So I'm not against truth and reconciliation. Anybody who knows me, Bruce was in high school.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, we, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
To an 80 year old.
Thank you. All right, anybody else, please step in the middle, welcome. Yep, please come. And others can feel free to line up as well.
Yes, no, no, it's okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Marcela Este, I am the president, the board member of the Center for Worker Justice, as well as being a leader for the Latino community. As a community leader, I affirm belief that it is essential for all voices to be here and that the TRC represent an important opportunity for our community to share their stories and experiences. I understand that the TRC is in the process of hiring someone to conduct interviews for the commission. And I would like to express my belief that it is crucial that this interviewer should be someone we trust from our community. It is essential that the interview understand the nuances and complexities of our culture and can relate to the experiences of those being interviewed. It is only through his level of understanding that we can hope to build the truth necessary for our community to engage fully with the commission, and it's worth. I encourage the council to give us more time to talk with the TRC community so we could discuss this further. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, please step up, welcome.
Hello again, David Sterling from Iowa City. So what I've been hearing from the counselors for the past three years is that they've been working borderline overtime hours on top of their day jobs in personal lives, often at the expense of their personal lives. It's clear that they have a deep passion for healing in the community, that they would put in that kind of time. I'm a parent myself, and I struggle to put in more than full-time hours for my child sometimes. The amount of effort put in just to heal our community and create this commission, I think, has been astounding. The facilitator that we just heard from earlier demonstrated a plethora of experience and knowledge and ability to answer every single question I have seen a city counselor ask about this commission's potential for liability, for success, for action. This facilitator can answer all of those questions, and they've been asked for three years and answered for three years. There's no excuse to perpetuate this constant use of these people's valuable time that they have donated so much of at the expense of their youth and their personal lives. This commission gives the community a means of resolving issues with civility publicly, without the need to just point fingers at people and shame them, but it means to discuss things in front of others, holding themselves accountable to their community. I have seen the opponents of this commission harass and demean its commissioners, these hardworking people. I've seen them screamed at and yelled at, attacked, not just with words, but with gesturing, with a violent attitude, even at city council meetings. I've heard this happen on camera recordings of city council meetings. I just saw it earlier when a city, when a commissioner tried to inform someone that it was not their turn to speak yet until public comment, and they were given almost violent, hostile attitude, immediately drawing battle lines. I don't know what they stand to gain from this commission not existing, but I know that the racist landlord class benefits the most from this community being divided, and I believe this is the best means for the community to find a uniting narrative and begin healing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and please step forward and give us your name and city you're from.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mayasa Hamid, and I am a resident of Iowa City.
Welcome.
My, my, my name is Mayasa Hamid, and my colleagues and I, who had to leave because of time, are a part of, are a part of the Sudanese youth group in Iowa City. As, as a youth, obviously, I'm very engaged in my community, and I know what's happening in my Iowa City. I learned about TRC only recently, and if I, a youth who, who didn't know about TRC till only recently, do you think my parents or the majority of the, of the population here in Iowa City knows about it? Before the budget, before the budget is approved, the, the, the TRC commissions should reach out to the community and get to know them first. We could come to a consensus on how to use the budget later on. Just pause and don't approve anything yet. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to welcome the next person up. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, again, my name's Daniel Mills from North Liberty. So my comment on the TRC builds on the comments that I've made to this council regarding the urgent need to defund the Iowa City Police Department as a matter of racial justice. This council should listen to the hard and important work the TRC has already done. Ask yourselves, how much video of TRC testimony have you watched? Have you done as much as you can to support their work? I think the answer is clear that the TRC needs more direct support from this council. I urge you to allocate the money the TRC is asking for to bring in facilitators to do their work of truth-seeking, listening to the community, and engaging in restorative practice. The harms experienced by BIPOC folks in our community are many, and the injustices run deep. Help the TRC continue their work of listening to the pain and trauma our neighbors are dealing with at the hands of the white supremacist status quo, including the policing and punishment bureaucracy. The TRC is asking for $400,000. I know where you can get at least 1.6 million. The opponents of this proposal set an impossible standard. They want to delay? This work has already been going on for three years. If you haven't gotten involved yet, ask yourself what's holding you back. The city attorney's presentation focused on how city staff is not fully trained on the work TRC is doing. This illustrates just how important this work is. The work is more important knowing that the city staff need to desperately be engaged in this process. His comments focused on the status quo. Repairing past and ongoing harms requires us to think beyond the comforting boxes of white supremacy that we are in. Support the TRC, give them the money they're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll ask the next person to step forward, and please give your name and city you're from. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tony Curran, and I'm a resident of Iowa City and a member of the Black Voices Project, and I will be their representative this evening, and I will read prepared remarks that you all received. The following statement reflects the views and the input of our members from the Black Voices Project shared during a discussion at our April meeting to the Iowa City City Council from Black Voices Project, May 1st, 2023. We last addressed the, the council on the topic of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission in May of 2022. At that time, we raised three primary concerns, issues. One, 18 months after the commission was created, it still had not engaged in any of the work it was charged to do, namely, fact finding, truth telling, and reconciliation. Two, lack of direction from city council led to significant misunderstanding about the available funds. Three, the commission proposed to use city funding to hire an out-of-state firm lacking the kind of community roots needed to earn the trust of those whose truths you seek. Today, a full year later, this community still has not seen any fact finding, truth telling, or reconciliation. A budget is before you this evening that proposes to pay an out-of-state facilitator more than $140,000 over the next seven months. For this money, the city will receive a job description for a community researcher. Another part of the budget and contract stipulates the city staff will take on the leadership of truth gathering and restorative practice. Staff are not currently trained to do so and is not included in the budget of contracts before you this evening. What we're asking you to do is not approve this budget tonight. We are grateful to our black community members who have attempted to navigate your ambiguous charge while serving on the commission, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll ask the next person to come forth. Thank you, and welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Asha Shafir, from this great Iowa City. I just heard about this organization like two, three days ago, and thank you for everybody's support and stand behind this good, strong community. I don't want to say please don't approve the budget, but I want to say please delay the decision tonight because I, I thought I was, or I am one of the active community, my, active member in my community, but I never heard about it, although they said it's running for three years since 2020 till today. Please delay this decision for tonight. Let us tell more of our community member to know about this great organization, and thank you.
Thank you. I'll have you step forward, welcome. Please state your name and city.
Hi, Ms. Allen Myers, and city staff, of course, how are you doing? Okay, my name is Mazar Saleh, I'm the executive director of the Center for Worker Justice. I want to start by saying thank you for all the commissioners who are in the room for the great work you do, for your time. We really like value this. And also, I want to say, TRC, this is a new, new, unique advocacy for Iowa City. How many like cities have TRC? Few. And Iowa City, like one of the cities that in the Midwest, and they have this TRC, this is huge. Yeah, we should be proud of having just the TRC by itself. You know, we are not against the TRC. I'm personally not against the city. That's something that I, since I was part of it when it happened, and the only thing is, when I, I rejected the budget before, for Karen Anwest, and my reasoning was, really, we need, there is a division in the community and for the black community, and we need people to reach out to the community. Since then, I don't think that, maybe, I hear that they reach out to some people, but like, for example, Kestha T. said that she met with us. Yeah, I, we are the one who initiated that. I went there, I was my other colleague, and we just want to talk to them about, don't approve the budget as the TRC level, not here. Before we come here, I went there to their meeting, that meeting has been postponed because there is no coram. After that, we met with them, with few members from different communities, and we talked to them about it, again, at the Center for Worker Justice, and we are the one who reached out. I reached out today and yesterday to four different organizations on this community who are black immigrants or non-immigrants, and I asked them, And I asked them if they being reached out by the TRC. Interestingly, what they said was the TRC is. Okay, if the people who are going to be telling the truth and this story, for those, like, for Kern and West, or whoever, whoever gonna come and talk to them, they don't know anything about it. How we can build that trust, so I can come confidently and tell you about my story. Kern and West, another, like, problem with Kern and West, they don't, they don't look like us as a community, and we don't trust them. So, we need people from this local, even, you know, I don't care even if the people are not local, by the way. Right now, at this moment, I really care about the people who look like us, so we can relate to them and we can tell the truth. Before even we say, like, do anything, I think we should come together and do this. My time is over. Last thing I want to say, but please, don't approve it. Let us get together, and after that, you can approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I know that you stated that you resigned from the TRC, but until
Yes, so I would like my three minutes, please and thank you.
Until the council votes on that resignation, you are still considered a commissioner.
Well, I don't think that I am. I resigned, unless you're forcibly keeping me on a commission. Is that what it is?
Nope. If you resign, then you resign.
Yeah.
Welcome.
That's why I said that. Thank you. So I have my three minutes here, and, you know, the tone before was just really calm of, you know, just really was trying to plead with people of, you know, just remember who you're talking to, what you're talking about. These are people within your community, you know? And then, unfortunately, I just started hearing some lies that were being told, and it was really hurt, because, again, these are people you're talking about. When you say, this didn't happen, that didn't happen, that didn't happen, I mean, like, my name is my name. At the end of the day. And when someone's gonna say, you never reached out to me, you never spoke to me, and I can literally pull up my phone right here and show the text messages, which I'm gonna have to turn in for public record anyways, you know, with the resignation, it honestly baffles me. And then, when I have more people say that, oh, the TRC never reached out to these groups, I mean, one of the people that said that, there is a business owner. It's a black woman, that she was actually getting essentially bullied out of her business, and this was during the TRC pause. You know, I didn't say a lot about it publicly at that time, because I just figured, ah, this doesn't have to be public. I can just work on this behind the scenes. But I literally went directly to the Center of Worker Justice and accompanied her there and sat there in that meeting. And not only that, I went to an event that they held, and I spoke on her behalf there because she didn't want to leave her store that day. And then, when she was at court, I went there too. And I also asked this council, before all of that, well, actually, a member of the council, I'm not gonna say her name, you know, doesn't matter anyways, you know who you are. I asked you what I should do to help her, because she forwarded me the emails showing that she contacted the council on a specific date. The council did little to nothing, and that I thought that was problematic, because the news is gonna contact me, and I'm not gonna lie to the news, and I'm gonna say that she did contact the city council, and they didn't do anything about it. So what can I do to help her? And I bring that specific example up to say that I think a lot of the blame here that some, some people place on the commission is honestly misplaced. It's, okay, you didn't do all of this to reach out, but did you, again, listen to what I told you earlier? Summer 2021, I literally slept four and a half hours a night. It's like, I'm really sorry I didn't get to every single person in the city, and I'm sorry if that makes you feel like you didn't matter as much. Again, I'm taking the blame. It's on me. It's on me, because I was the chair at the time. But if all it's gonna be is, hey, this is a problem, this is a problem, and I'm not hearing real solutions, I have a problem with that, because we are never gonna go anywhere. Every time we come here for this, it's a new thing, it's a new thing, it's a new thing. Show up to the meeting and tell us then. Show up to the meeting and tell them then. Call people on the phone. Numbers are literally public information. Address is public information. No one reaching out, and I, and I have multiple
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Please step up to the march. Please step up to the mic. Please, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please step up to the mic and give your name and the city you're from. And I will say, we need to not be clapping, especially, I'm speaking specifically to the TRC commissioners. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Diana Henry, and I have been a resident of Iowa City since 1977. I believe the council needs to support the TRC, so many of the BIPOC and other marginalized community members have been left out of experiencing what it means to be truly welcome in Iowa City. I hope by supporting the TRC and its consultants, as cited earlier, with an understanding that TRC needs to reach out to all the stakeholders in a compassionate and professional manner to achieve its goals. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm gonna take a show of hands, because I'm gonna bring this to a close. Any other, anyone else seated that want to speak? All right, I'm gonna have you come, and then I'm gonna have this one, this Supervisor Porter come, and you wanna come? Okay. And then, we're gonna close the public portion of this. Welcome.
Brian Nils, living in the Iowa City area here. Ever since hearing about the TRC and the work that's going on, and again, as other people very rightly put it, all the passion that's behind a project like this, it's very exciting to see. It's not all that common in the U.S. And as someone who wants to live in this community in the future, it would be really awesome to grow with a community that does that. I haven't personally experienced those things before, but it seems like, I guess, to use an exact language, something very cool, something very fulfilling and growth-filled to be a part of. That being said, we've heard from a lot of different community members here who haven't been reached out to, or maybe don't know, have enough information to be a part of the process. But that is, like, something that, like, facilitators, that these consultants, that is, that is something that they, they bring to this. That is the experience of bringing people together, the experience of how to make sure to reach out to as many people and as many communities as possible so that we don't let people fall through the cracks. And I really urge the council here to approve the budget so that, that work, that, that process can happen so that the experts who can come in from both locally and from the state are are helping us do that process so that we don't leave people behind. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll ask the next person to come forth. Yep. Welcome. Please state your name and city.
Supervisor Porter, Roy San Porter, Iowa City, Iowa. You know, I was gonna read something, but I'm just gonna state it. When we're talking about truth and reconciliation, I not one time came here to put the TRC down. I came to support the TRC. But I'm looked at because of all the, everything that has happened. To me, it seemed like the TRC won't let it go. I've let it go. When the Chair of the TRC called the Black Voices members coons, niggers, you wanna talk about reconciliation? You wanna talk about hurt? If we don't reconcile within ourselves, this whole thing, I don't give a damn who they get the money to, it's going nowhere. Nowhere. I came here. I invited four of you, the four of you standing back there. I invited you to Black Voices. We talked. I never put you down. We had a friendly conversation. Cliff, Mohammed, Chastity, and Eric Harris, who is not here. Until there's some healing within the TRC and our black community, I don't care how much and who you give the money to, we're going nowhere. I'm gonna stand here today. My recommendation was to come before you and ask you. The city council members, TRC, and our black community have a town hall. Already, I didn't have one of the members of the TRC throw the black people under the bus like we nobody, the black community. Let's continue to move on. You can't go nowhere without us. We are here. We're going nowhere. And this is where the hurt is, when we talk about hurt. When you talk about somebody within your own community calling you coons and niggers, we can't get along with each other. Yet, you wanna sit and have some white men come in, pay them $140,000 from California? We don't know them. We don't trust them. This work, the indigenous people, the Hispanic people, this work can be everybody that's on that agenda for today in this community. The work can be done by them. We don't need Kerns and West to come in here. The money can go to them. Annie Tucker mediation, all this reconciliation and, and, and all the stuff they wanna do, that can be done within our community amongst ourselves. But first of all, they gotta forgive themselves to move on. Or we're going nowhere. I ask recommendation for all of us to have a town hall meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. And please come forth and state your name and city you're from.
My name is Danny Velazquez. I'm from Iowa City. I've been a resident for the last three years. I had a, a written letter here. I'm gonna read a little bit of it, but it's been a lot of passion going on today. I believe that this council needs to continue to advise everyone on what we should do next. I do stand with some of my indigenous community here, that this is necessary. Last year, I was at a school where they were talking about before, where there's some stuff that happened that shouldn't have happened. And that, that's, that's hurtful in the indigenous community that we're still being erased. The indigenous community is a small folks here in Iowa City, yes. And it's an area that we demanded to be included in the truth and reconciliation process. We are tired of the eraser. The eraser is the main component and the root of the community's most harmful injustices, resulting in continuous genocide. We understand that the TRC was mobilized in the wake of the Joy Flora's horrible death, and we do not wish to take away from any of those traumas. We do not wish to bring awareness, we do wish to bring awareness to our own horrific issues, the police brutality that seems to be invisible. We implore you to look at what happened to Zachary Bear Hills on June 5th, 2017, so we understand why many of us are here with you and with the black community. We took to the streets with the black community during 2020. Additionally, please read about Shyla Wolf-Muskwaki, who was assaulted in front of her children on March 30th, 2023, by Officer Kyle Hall in Tema, Iowa. And for further information on that violence, you can go to the Collective Action Will End Police Violence in Indigenous Communities at the Great Plains Action Society's blog. We felt the pain, the rage, watching scenes of brutality against our own loved ones. We understand what the unique issues within our communities. We also understand that we have common themes. We have common oppressive systems. We have a purpose and a unified front to provide the power and protection in order to give some space of work unique to those issues within our communities. We understand that division is the foundation of what people call America, starting with manifest destiny and with the doctrine of discovery. This indoctrination of division has been forced upon us for 500 years. We have heard the concerns of divisions coming from the community because of indoctrination. The division is prevalent in most communities, including our indigenous ones. Lateral violence hurts us every time. We are essentially fighting two wars. One against our oppressors.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, our last speaker is coming at this time, and those online, your hand wasn't raised from the beginning, so we're gonna be ending with this. Welcome.
I'm Angie Jordan. I'm a South District resident. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I feel like I've shared a lot of my thoughts, both publicly and 101s with, with council, with TRC commissioners, with folks throughout the community. And I'm, I'm moved here in this moment, because it's gonna sound hokey, but look at all this energy in this room that was created and, and brought into this cauldron because of the TRC. Without a budget, with, without consultants, they were able to garner this, this that's vibrating in us, that's shaking in my hands here now. Imagine what they could do if unleashed with resources, people. Imagine the spaces they could go. Imagine this energy multiplied. If this budget's approved and they're given that opportunity. I'm so excited to see if this can keep continuing to expand, to reach those places that right now they're unable to reach, right? They're not able to. They don't have all the tools. This is the opportunity for the council tonight to approve something that gives them those tools, so that we can continue to co-create. Thank you.
Thank you, and at this time, we're gonna have council deliberation. And thanks to everyone that spoke tonight. I know that you've put yourself out there to really share from your heart your thoughts, so I really appreciate that. Council deliberation. Well, I'll start. If no one will jump out there. So, again, thank you to the TRC members. I really appreciate all of your presence being here tonight. And of course, thanks, of course, thanks to our TRC members, of course, thanks to all the voices in our community that came out tonight. I, I think because of time, I won't be able to go into everything, but I'm gonna do just a real condensed. So, when the council in 2021 said no to the budget, the reason they said no to the budget was because the community came out and said, we want to be involved, and the council said, we need to see the community in this budget. And, and at that meeting, there's a few things that I wanna talk about that took place. Kerns and West, I believe Larry is his name, and I will quote exactly what he stated. He said, "The only way for the TRC work to be done, to be a success either way, if we're engaged with it or not, is if the community defines how the process should look and participates in that process that they will fully embrace. Our work is in tandem. We're a conduit for the community to have a process that they need to have and to help the community create the brave space to hear each other's truths that reflects a process for truth, reconciliation, and that's a challenge we, that they've embraced." So I just wanna highlight that they talked about that, that the community defines how that process should look, and the participants in that process that they fully embrace. Also, we have one of the consultants, which at the time wasn't a consultant, that stated at the same meeting, infusing resources into leaders that are already in this community builds trust, support. It's difficult to bring someone in from the outside, even as much success that they have. I don't hear a lot of healing, looking, I don't hear, I, I'm sorry, I don't hear, what I hear is a lot of healing that was going on in the room that night. Looking for leaders to do the work, we need to talk about healing. I do believe we have the proclaimed or unproclaimed, those closest to the problem that could use the resources and find that path, that good path, that healing road to build that healing process. So, when I think about Kerns and West, they already they already, in that moment, there was a lot of hurt expressed in the community. We're still hearing that hurt today. We're still hearing it. 2021 to now, there has been so many challenges. And I think the last one was in, it ended about October. And what I saw at that moment was, when it ended, the conversations between, you'll say, the community individuals that were having tension, the communication started to happen. People started to talk. But what, but, and the budget wasn't a part of that conversation, which it wasn't appropriate. It was more like healing, starting the healing process, starting the reconciliation, just having conversation, which had never really happened before. We just heard the this side and my side. So then, when the budget gets to the, you know, the, which I really believe it was a continuation from 2021, when the budget gets to the commissioners, when they were all finalized, then the community said, we want to, we're ready to talk. We're ready to be engaged. I know the TRC want the engagement. You all have done things to try to get some folks engaged. You want the engagement. That's a part of what I heard from you all. You want, you want the community engaged. There was a statement that was made. Speed of, you know, community-led framework moving at the speed of trust. The trust just started to happen between the community and the TRC members. It just started to happen. What I'm gonna ask of this council is to defer this decision. Because the last thing I want to do is for it to be front page that this council has not accepted the TRC budget. I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that. I'm gonna ask for a deferment so that the community that is here today. And one of the other things that happened is that this council, we have not taken the responsibility of giving direction to our TRC commissioners. That is on us. That is on me. I am sorry. So at this time, I'm gonna ask, and maybe people need to talk first, but, I mean, I can say a lot of more stuff. And people say, why now? People say, why are they coming now? It's because all that trauma before, they couldn't, there was no, there was no space for discussion. It was just back and forth. There was no space for discussion. And so, and the other thing is, I don't want the TR, this is, I want the TRC members to know that I am not saying that you all have done anything wrong. And that's not what I'm saying. The tension happened. It was moving. It was in the moment. It happened. At this moment, the community is saying, we are ready to engage. That's what you all want. You want the engagement. You talked about it. It's happening right now. Let's pause. Engage with the community. Figure it out. They're ready to engage. The, what we heard from the TRC members and what we heard from the public, I'll tell you that even myself, over the past few days, I have been going through a reconciliation process. I've been saying things to people that it took this moment for me to share my truths and my frustrations, as well as share my joy that we have a TRC in our community. So I needed to take that moment as well to vent. And we saw that here today. I think the venting happened. I think when you all come together, that venting is gonna shift. The space has already been created. It's gonna shift. So I don't know, but I would like to, I don't know. When I make the motion, I don't know if people talk first, but.
I would like.
Yeah, yes. All right.
Yes, thank you. This has been an extraordinarily, whoever spoke about blood pressure, I understand. And I also was realizing, I was bearing witness to anguish and to hope and to wanting to move forward and of also recognizing that there's a lot of pain still. But for that reason, I feel more compelled to say this is why we need to pass this. Because I am a firm believer that the work that has been done since the October 22 pause by local entities who said, we need to think about this in a different way. And I will go all the way full circle to the beginning when we talked about this being, it's an unusual set of contracts. It's an unusual way to put this together. And that would not have happened. It didn't happen as it was presented, or was going to be presented in October, when there was a hierarchical person who was, or entity that was for accountability. And then everyone else was going to do the work. And yet, there was a, there was a vertical hierarchy. Through working through this process and coming to an understanding and bringing people in and educating, I think Kearns and West, who has not operated in this way before, as well as the strength of exactly what I've heard tonight about the local community leaders making those changes, we have them. Right? That's how there has been some shifts in the way in which this entire contract or set of contracts has been conceived of. I firmly believe, when I started off saying about blood pressure and shakiness, this has been three years of it and more and more for the community, as decades and decades and decades. And I can't speak to that. I don't have that lived experience. But what I did witness tonight was in fact, and I wrote it down, to say, we need to reconcile. We need to heal. And it was pure pain. And saying, then, we can do it ourselves. There are good reasons to have people who have gone through a process that nobody, no one in this community has gone through before, and very few in the United States have before, to work with experts who already have been educated by the local community to say, you need to understand how we're gonna function and you have to be flexible with that. And from what I understand, they've said, okay, down to where the bottom line is, quite literally. And then also to be able to listen to what the community needs and be able to contribute, here's how we did this globally. I think that that expertise, at the very same time, I do not want to dismiss, and nor am I, I am listening to the fact of, this doesn't work if the DRC doesn't show up. And I know that you have been working and working against headwinds. But you do need to be in the community. You need to do the reach out. It's not enough just to have the meetings. And I know that individually, people have been having those conversations. But you need to have that approval. What am I saying? Why am I looking for a word? You need to have the approval of council to be able to move forward and say, hello, I am in the TRC and I am here to help. And to go and have that authority. It's one thing when I was not a counselor and I was a volunteer and I was a community engagement person and I would go out. I didn't have the authority. That does matter in this process too. And I am not dismissing, I know that there are those who will think that I am. I am not dismissing the very, very valid issues that have come up. There have been a lot of missteps by council, by some members of the TRC. There's plenty of fingers to point. But the point is, is everyone in this room, as Angie said, is looking to heal, is looking to channel energy in a way so that we can all move forward. I do not see having conversations, which, I don't see this as a chronology. I don't say that you have to have conversations in order to pass the budget, pass the budget and have the conversations. That's what the work is. So with due respect to, and you and I have had many hours on this. There's been so much compelling truth. But this is where I say that actually, this is what this is for. This is what this process is for, and this is what movement forward is for. And so I do believe that approving the budget right now, this is the step that the TRC needs. Otherwise, I don't know how long this is gonna last, regardless of whether we extend this or not. What work can they do? So, thank you for indulging me that long.
I know that this isn't totally appropriate, but I just want to make one other comment that I didn't make. But we heard from one member of the public that said, you know, they don't trust Kearns and West. Like, you know, there is groups that don't trust Kearns and West. And then I heard someone from the TRC say that, you know, the groups have been, we need outsiders to be objective, to be an objective group, not aligned with any person or a group. I have to tell you that when the, when we had that thing about the commissioner here in this room, one of the partners came in, Think Peace, and spoke, or had a letter that came to council, as well as spoke to me one-on-one. Wasn't about healing process. Well, there were some elements about, you know, we're sort of just a healing process. But there were some personal, direct, this is not the way, opinions. How about that? So there is harm done that I think we cannot ignore by the facilitators that the commissioners have in place. So I don't want that to be missed. That there is some hurt feelings about the folks that is a part of this process. And I won't say anything else until I can get to a deferral.
I've been trying to scribble my thoughts down from what folks are saying. And I do appreciate what the mayor's saying and also what Mayor Bertin Alter said. But, and I applaud the commissioners. I came in with an idea in mind and then your passionate pleas and very convincing of your need to proceed with this. But then hearing, hearing the hurt that's still out there. And I'm going to get emotional because I'll admit, I have some very dear friends who were hurt by comments and actions that were not appropriate. And as they've said, they've tried to move on that, beyond that. And I've tried to move beyond that. But it sounds to me as though there is part of the commission that, that needs to talk about this amongst themselves and solve those hurt feelings and also move beyond. And if that would take a deferral for just a moment, I mean, I'm all, I'm in favor of having this facilitator. And I applaud you also for looking at the healing partners and the folks that are local, Vee and her group and Annie doing the healing circles. That's community. That's coming from the community. That's a big part of the community. But speaking of community, I was concerned by the number of people who said that they had no idea. I don't know where they've been. They had no idea that the TRC existed or still exists or was still trying to exist. And that concerns me. Because that reaching out that you say you've been doing for the last two and a half, three years, apparently has not happened. I'm pretty certain they didn't say that. But a lot of these folks who said this are part of the Sudanese community, which I can very easily get ahold of them. I know where they are, where the majority of them live. And if I have concerns or want to talk to them or call a meeting, I go over to their neighborhood center. I know. And that should have been one of the first places to go. Because there are a very large portion of the non-white community here in Iowa City. And your group should have been contacting them and saying, you know, where should we start? You know, where, what can we do? That would have been a start. But I applaud you for what you've done in the last six months, nine months. It's very commendable. But I'm gonna go along with the mayor on perhaps deferring at least for another meeting, just so you folks amongst yourselves can, can solve these issues.
Well, I'm gonna try to be brief because this has been a very, very long and extended conversation. And I'll just simply say, I'm of the opinion or of mind that we do need to approve this. I feel that the, the process for it to really work toward reconciliation needs to start by signing the contract and having the work begin. That their participation will help resolve these issues that we still see are not fully resolved yet. But I do feel we need the participants in the team to help with that reconciliation among the community members for that to happen. And we've had deferrals. We've had pauses on the commission's part, on the council. You know, there are numerous pauses along the way. I really am concerned that we would consider another one now. It seems to me we're at a point to make a decision. I'm impressed with the team's concept, the project summary. I feel that what divisions we were experiencing need to be processed through the truth and reconciliation process. Let's have a town hall meeting. Perhaps that's one of the first things that we need to think about as a part of how we're gonna move forward. But let's do it as a part of the process. I really want it to be folded into the work that we're considering tonight, rather than viewing it as something we're gonna defer on and then come back to later. Let's just move forward. Let's learn from what we can, from what's been said tonight. But that's, I don't know, I'm, again, just feeling that we need to approve the contract and fold into it what we've been hearing tonight as perhaps the first steps. Perhaps they're preliminary steps, but part of the process rather than deferral.
So, so many different facets of this. And I'm not even gonna attempt to cover all of them, but a couple of things that jump out at me. And one of those is a thread of the what next or how to do this next step. What does this next step look like? And does it need to be a part of the official contract at Phase 1 or something else? As I understand it, Phase 1 looks at going out, and it's an educational component, going out and explaining to the community the next steps in the process. Not all bad. I mean, that's not a bad thing to do at all. But I'm also hearing, and actually even just the last few days, reaching out to a variety of friends and people that I know care deeply about these issues. But one thing, and I've noticed this through the years of being involved in politics, even back when I was covering politics, to a certain extent, it's easy to forget that in many ways, we're a little bit of outliers. We're, we, the time we spend in this is not necessarily representative of, well, you think about the majority of your friends, right? You know, I don't know about you guys, but when I said I was gonna run for council, many of my friends and family thought, you know, what, why would you do such a thing? We're outliers, and that's okay. But then what happens is sometimes we get, I'm gonna speak for myself. I have gotten into that bubble where I forget, I assume people know stuff that's going on. I forget that there's like that disconnect. And it's not because people don't care. It's not because people don't have the same values. It's often just because people are busy. And so even as I was reaching out to people that were, you know, people in this room and they were reaching out to me and that's all good. But also people that are, care about these issues but are a step removed, right? Aren't always at these meetings, haven't been in this process. And I was struck by, I actually, and again, I'm not doing this with any sort of a And I was struck by, I actually, and again, I'm not doing this with any sort of an agenda here, but the TRC still exists. Explained to a friend with TRC was like, that sounds great. We should have that. It's like, well, I have good news for you because we do, and it is a great thing. But my point being is there's like a disconnect between oftentimes what we think people are hearing, even though we're yelling, we feel like we're yelling at the top of the rooftops, and what actually is going on. There's a lot of noise out there and us trying to cut through the noise is tough. I don't care if you're trying to sell a car or trying to make the world a better place. There's just a lot of noise out there. One of the things I wonder, and I think this is, I wonder if this has to be part of the contract thing. And what I hear from people saying like they don't see themselves in some of the planning that has happened. Now, I will defend a little bit that a lot of that work was done behind the scenes and had to be done behind the scenes. That's, there's so much work that had to go into coming up with this new approach, with these four different contracts that are looking at things in a new way. And, and that's exciting and it's daunting and it's a little bit scary and it's got a lot of potential. You know, Angie said earlier about feeling the energy in the room because we all care about this stuff very much. You know, and there's, it's just so complicated. What I'm wondering is if some of that may just be back to the basic principles of just, not necessarily phase one, here's what we think needs to happen. But instead, here's who we are, community. And, and I'm going to throw an idea out there and it, I won't even take credit as it, is it coming from me? But I've heard it and I've heard it now from a couple of different places, unprompted and unconnected. But the idea of just going out into things like, we're coming into summer and we have such a vibrant, active community in the summer. So this is speaking to that piece, not some of the other very important pieces, but to that piece. Going out to things like the diversity market, the farmer's market, having a table. Hey, we're the TRC and what do you think truth and reconciliation looks like to you, community? Now, you already have a lot of work done and a lot of ideas. And it's not about restarting that process, but maybe spending a little time with that and then getting some good ideas, right? Maybe there's some stuff that, and people just, or just building that goodwill. That people say, okay, as some people have said, you know, we don't know that we trust what's going on here, our communities. But, you know, you see somebody a few times, you know, in a couple of different settings, festivals, different things like that. And we talked about, the mayor talked about direction. And this is just me, this is not the council giving you this direction. I'm throwing some ideas out there that if I were said, if somebody were to say, what direction would you give? This would kind of be it. And it's that basic level going out and now taking all this work that you've done and going out in just that last step of that process, letting people get some buy-in. And just, you know, in that visibility, that visibility piece, that it's, it's not some strange thing, it's some, it's a part of the community, which it really is. And it's a shame really that more people don't know about that. But I'm not blaming the people, I'm not blaming the TRC because you guys have been working hard. It's just a different approach. And so my question would be, does what I'm talking about, if that's, if anybody else on this council even agrees with that, that thing, does that have to be a part of phase one or can that happen? And then we launch into the contract and the actual phase one sort of thing. So that's the question I kind of have. I don't know who could answer that, but that's what's going through my mind as I'm trying to make a decision here.
I'll jump in, councillor. Good news is that kind of engagement is what's in the proposal. And you know, as well as I do, that cutting through the noise takes resources. So if we pause and we say, try and cut through the noise a little bit more and then maybe we'll consider giving you resources to do that, we are just shooting ourselves in the foot. It just, it's nonsensical to me. So I, I think, I think if we listen to what's been in the proposal and what, what the TRC has been saying, it is that. It is that. It is the work.
So in terms of just, and this is again, does the resource, I agree, there has to be some support, but is that the only way? Like if we're talking about, I don't know, what does it take to go out and have, you know, the, the material stuff? I mean, that we would go out with any city commission?
It's in there.
That's one approach, right? And that, but that's, that's, I'm just saying, is that the only way forward? If, if, to have to approve the whole contract in order to get that piece moving?
It's the way that our commission has said would work very well for them after deliberating, after getting good direction from us on what was lacking before when we paused and we said, no, come back with something different. And they've come back with something different that includes exactly those kinds of elements and the resources to implement it. I think we have the same packet, but it's, it's in there.
No, no. And the difference being is one is approving a contract that includes all the pieces.
Okay.
Versus a, hey, let's go get that, the people that were in this room that say, that are like halfway there. That's kind of what I heard. We really, I've heard people that are halfway there. They're like the TRC, they like this idea, they're not so sure about this, this $400,000 investment. So what I'm, I guess maybe what I'm asking is do we start with that $400,000 investment? Or do we say, I don't know if this is something we direct city staff, say, hey, TRC members, they need, they need, they need enough resources to like have a table, to have some things to hand out, flyers. Again, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there as like that, as, as, as the public launch versus the behind the scenes stuff, that then still allows for that public to show the shape what comes, comes next. Because maybe there's a few things that would be tweaked by that. Because there's, you know, it's just that part like, and yeah, it can be like, hey, we're having meetings. Why, you know, but that just doesn't, just never works that way.
I do think a deferment can allow the TRC to have some follow-up discussion based on what they heard here and from the public. And they could come back relatively quickly with, you know, some immediate elements. Maybe they determine that they want to have a town hall meeting with a, with a facilitator, you know, with a facilitator. I would not suggest the ones that's associated to this right now because of some hard feelings, but, you know, a neutral person. So there is opportunity. So I don't want the TRC or anyone to think that this can't go anywhere. There is opportunity.
Sure.
Can I ask a question? In what instance have we ever, has the council or any commission crowdsourced a budget? Which is essentially what I'm hearing. I mean, honestly, I absolutely agree that we need to get buy-in and we need to understand what the desires, the needs and direction from the community who is now saying, we hear it, we're interested in this, right? But we also want to talk about how this money is going to be spent, which is valid. But what I'm hearing is that we're going to press pause until the community can weigh in on precisely what they want that budget to be. That's the death knell, right there.
It's a continuation of the, of the conversation. It's a continuation from 2021. We still have the same issues that were identified.
How do we call the question on, has there even been a motion?
I would like, I would like an option, an opportunity to speak.
No.
Andrew hasn't had a chance to.
Yeah, so I will be supporting this first and foremost. I think that, I'm not going to go over all of the very intense emotions and circumstances that we're dealing with here today. But I very much largely do agree that, one, we should not be asking our nine volunteer unpaid commissioners to be organizers in the community and telling them to do more and more and more while they have their own lives and their jobs that they're managing while they're trying to do some of the most important work that our city has faced in generations. I don't feel comfortable with that. I think that they have given us, with city staff and local leaders and providers, an excellent plan for how we can move forward. And I think that at the same time, the commission should take this conversation at the very least as direction to, to address some of the concerns that have been talked about today. I don't think you can do that with no resources. You cannot reach out to, and I say this as someone who's worked in political organizing for at least seven years, you are not going to be knocking on people's doors, going out into places and meeting people where they are without resources. Kerns and West is a communications firm. We want to, I want to give you the resources that you need to get our charge, which is admittedly ambiguous, done so that our community can heal. I think that that's the right thing to do. I know that it's certainly contentious. But if we are to mend those, that pain that people in this room and around the community are feeling, I strongly believe that you need the resources to get that done. And that at the same time, we can have that form of our, of our leaders of the black community and our black community members, along with anyone else who is interested in participating and learning about the TRC, we can do it at the same time and we can do it better with resources. Everyone deserves a voice here and everyone's voice is going to be amplified by every dollar that we give them. It doesn't mean carte blanche again, that we give them all the dollars forever, but I think we have a good proposal in front of us. And I think it's going to do a lot of good to, to heal our community. And again, I think that the commissioners are going to take our intense conversation today as a direction to try to mend those, those, that harm that has happened in the past so that the work could actually get done. Because one thing that is true is that this will not work without total community buy-in. I do think that those, again, those harms need to be healed. Hearts need to be mended. But the first step to doing that is giving our commissioners the resources that they need to get it done. And I will be voting to support.
Mayor, I apologize. I thought we were only talking about the deferral at this point.
No, because I never made a motion.
Got it. I apologize.
Yes.
Lost my temper a little there. May I make some comments then about the overall proposal? Thank you.
I know you can count.
Well, I just think it's really important to acknowledge the work that has happened in this community for decades. And, and that the work that will happen is building on that. And I have heard our commissioners say, I want to stand on the shoulders of the people who've been doing the work. And Supervisor Porter, I agree with you 100%. Your quote is, until there's some healing, we are going nowhere. Until there's some healing, we are going nowhere. You should have your town hall and it should be with support. It should be with resources. It should be venting without that structure, without that care, without that support, without the experts who can say, oh, I've seen this before. We had one commenter talk about Greensboro. Well, our experts work with them directly. We know that's what we're bringing to the table in, in this. And so I, I feel and hear deeply how much this hurts. And we've been watching it and contributing to it. I know I have for three years almost. And I just think this is our opportunity to take this energy and push forward and, and to start it. And I really just want to reflect, yes, I can count, mayor, but I really want, I want to, I want to share some positive things, some things that I heard. I heard passion, I heard gratitude, I heard hope, I heard this is a historic moment. I heard leap of faith. I heard we have the motivation, we need the tools. I heard that we will do the right thing. We have an opportunity to improve our community. We have to start somewhere. I want my grandchild to have it better than I did. I hope you take a chance. Before this, I didn't have a voice. This will do a lot of good and we are a strong enough city. Thank you, mayor.
All right. So I think because I can count that there is going to be a majority supporting this, I will not make a motion for a deferment. Any final comments before we go to vote? Again, I just want to say thanks to all the commissioners and to the community for coming out. And while I, while I, while I will not support this, and I, you know, I think for me, it's the, it is the community part that was talked about 2021. It's the, the, I would not call them non-objective group that's been selected. I think they've made direct, they've inserted their opinions throughout this process and not just talked like what, you know, reconciliatory truth looks like and how it feels. But nevertheless, at the end of the day, I will fall in line and support what this council puts forth as well as supporting what the TRC has to do from here on out. Roll call, please.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
For the same reasons, no.
Taylor?
And motion passes four to three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote.
No.
No, okay.
Motion passes four to three. Could I, and again, thanks to everyone for coming out. And now you have a new charge. You have some money, TRC members. All right, could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Number nine D is an extension of the TRC timeline. Resolution extending the timeline for the work of the city's ad hoc truth and reconciliation commission from June 30th, 2023 to December 31st, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second, Alter.
All right. And we're going to go to Eric Gores, our city attorney.
Really nothing else to mention here, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, it's been a lengthy discussion already. And if council's ready to move forward and the vote that you've just offered indicates you are, then we'll need to have an extension to allow the TRC to do their work.
Great, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this extension only? Saying no one online or, or present, council discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to kind of sort of echo. So I was almost, but not quite there on the last vote, but on this one, this is far, far easier. And this is where I can, can give the full-throated like just thank you. And I do think that it, that I, this one is easy to support. I don't feel conflicted on this. The work you've been doing has been great. We are lucky as a community to have you. It has been a rocky road. I'm sure we haven't hit all the bumps. But I do have faith in this entire community. And, and I do see the work you've done and I see you. So, so this is an easy yes for me this time around.
And ditto, ditto, ditto. Even from the beginning, this was going to be a yes for me because I know that the work of the TRC, regardless of whatever that earlier vote was going to be, needs to continue. So I'm going to be voting in favor.
Well, I'll, I'll just go out on a limb and say that when I first read this proposal, I believed it was an unreasonable request. And I still believe it to be unreasonable as it's already been a ridiculously long time as we've been discussing since the commission was first created. There are persons I'll mention because this was brought up that are faulting the council for lack of direction or guidance that they believe was not given to the commission from the beginning. And I do apologize for that. I admit that, that that possibly is true. But I also will say that with two of the initial appointments that were made and the initial facilitator that was approved by council, I felt that those persons' experience and knowledge would provide the beneficial leadership necessary for the commission to get started and get their feet on the ground. But of course, that didn't happen and I won't dwell on what happened with that because we all know. My first thought was to possibly propose a 12-month extension rather than 18. And I might stand by that still, that I would think a year would be a reasonable amount to, to get that done. Because I think I'd heard different, like four months for one part of the thing and seven months for another part. So I would think that 12 months could get that done. But apparently the commissioners believe that 18 months would enable them to undertake and accomplish what they have been charged to do. But I, I just can't in good conscience agree to 18 months.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes six to one. All right. Thanks everybody. We're going to go to nine E. Approval of the fiscal year 2024 annual action plan. Resolution adopting Iowa City's fiscal year 2024 annual action plan, which is a sub-part of Iowa City's 2021 through 2025 consolidated plan. And can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Dunn.
Second, Alter.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter. And we're going to welcome.
If I could first, Mr. Mayor, because I serve in the UAW board, who is applicant for each of the next two items, I'm going to have First Assistant City Attorney Sue Dulick stand in my stead.
Thank you. All right.
Stretch.
We're going to go ahead and continue with our business meeting. So I ask everyone to please take their conversations outside. Thanks to everybody. And I'm going to welcome our Neighborhood Services Coordinator, Erica. Welcome.
Erica Kuplay with Neighborhood Services. So the annual action plan is part of our five-year consolidated plan called City Steps 2025. We're preparing for our fourth year of the plan. The purpose of the action plan is to show how we will spend CDBG and home funding for the upcoming fiscal year, including goals, projects, and who will benefit. Our allocation is $731,382 in CDBG funding and $515,467 in home funding for FY24. Iowa City receives this funding each year as an entitlement community. Our funding hasn't changed much in recent years, but this shows our funding since 2000. So just to show that we're receiving less funding than we have more than 20 years ago. We also have a chart showing inflation-adjusted historic funding, just to show that funding is not keeping up with inflation. In the past few years, with labor shortages, supply chain issues, and increased housing costs, funding is not going to go as far as it would have previously. That being said, we have some great projects lined up for FY24. These are the HCDC recommendations for the plan. We're funding two aid-to-agency projects with CDBG public service dollars at neighborhood centers and DVIP. We have two facility improvement projects. Shelter houses making safety improvements to their emergency shelter. And supplemental funds were awarded to DVIP for the construction of their new shelter. Both of these projects are only eligible for CDBG funds. Neighborhood improvements, housing rehab, and economic development are set asides that we fund each year and administer internally. Planning administration covers staff costs, and that is also a set aside each year. And then for housing activities, HCDC has recommended that $200,000 will go to Housing Fellowship for construction of a single-family home on an infill site on Ronald Street in partnership with the Home Builders Association and the school district. Housing Fellowship will also receive CHODO funds for rental rehab and operations. Habitat has been allocated $80,000 for down payment assistance, which will provide affordable homeownership for two households. The city applied for additional funds for a down payment assistance program, which will assist buyers who purchase homes in low-income census tracts in Iowa City. This funding will continue our partnership with Green State and AdHills as a partner lender. And then UAW, their project is funding for acquisition and rehab of transitional housing serving homeless youth in their Transitional Living Program. As part of the funding allocation process, staff scored applications and also made funding recommendations ahead of HCDC. Based on the information provided, staff did not recommend funding to UAW's project. They did not submit the required rental pro forma to demonstrate that the project is financially feasible and viable for the duration of the period of affordability. This information is required for the underwriting of a project, and we felt we just didn't have enough information without it. The project also scored the lowest, and they didn't have a property identified at the time of application, which were other considerations for our recommendation. HCDC opted to partially fund UAW's project at $110,000. They felt that the project fulfills a unique need in the community and that there may be opportunities for UAW to leverage other resources with an initial commitment of the federal funds. And that, since has happened, they've been awarded funds through the Housing Trust Fund as well. And those are contingent on our federal funding. So based on this, staff recommends that UAW is awarded funding as recommended by HCDC, with a caveat that they have until March 15th, 2024, to identify a property and submit the necessary pro forma and financial information for their project. This aligns with their proposed timeline in their application, as well as our unsuccessful and delayed project policy timing. At that time, we would reevaluate whether the project can move forward or if funds should be reallocated in next year's funding allocation. And then each of these projects meets the city's values and fit within the Housing and Neighborhoods impact area of the strategic plan. All projects serve low-income residents and meet the needs of vulnerable populations. And here is our timeline. This meeting is our official public meeting for the action plan. A draft has been available for public comment since April 1st. We have not received any comments so far, as far as I'm aware. HCDC recommended approval of the action plan on April 20th and is due to HUD on May 15th. Funding will be available sometime after July 1st, once our plan has been approved and agreements are in place. Thank you.
Great. Any questions for Erica? All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand at this time. All right, welcome. Yes. Yes.
Hi, it's Zahar Saleh. I'm just going to talk about the, like, $0 recommendation by HCDC to...
One more. It's the next item. This is a different one.
Because I was outside, I don't know.
Yes, no worry. No worry.
Next time, come back.
Yep. All right. Anyone else want to address this topic? CNNO one, council discussion? Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number nine F. Fiscal Year 2024 Aid to Agencies. Resolution allocating human service aid to agencies funded for fiscal year 2023, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Thomas.
All right, welcome again.
Thank you. Each year, Iowa City provides funding for operational costs of local nonprofits serving low-income residents through the Aid to Agencies program. Legacy agencies are identified through the city's Consolidated Plan, City Steps 2025. Only agencies listed in the plan are eligible to apply for this funding. Last year, three new agencies became eligible for legacy funding. This is the first funding round that those agencies, Center for Worker Justice, Dream City, and Houses into Homes are eligible to apply. Agencies apply through the United Way joint funding process. We currently accept applications every other year and prorate awards for the second year based on the approved budget. Agencies awarded funding this year will automatically receive funding next year. Applications were due in September 2022. HCDC held a question-and-answer session with applicants in October, developed an initial recommendation in November, and made a formal recommendation to council at their January 2023 meeting. In February, council requested that HCDC take another look at the allocation with direction to consider all that came in, regardless of the deadline. That discussion took place at their March 30th, 2023 meeting. They discussed the applications again and voted to keep the same recommendation, which is what you're seeing on your screen here. And this is in the order of the application score. And then up to 5% of our total aid-to-agency budget can be allocated to emergent agencies in awards from $5,000 to $15,000. Applications are accepted annually through the city. This year, we received six applications. HCDC recommended funding to four of those agencies, maximizing the 5% of emerging funds. And funding for emerging agencies are for one year. Its agency program fits within several areas of the strategic plan. The program allows us to have strong partnerships with local nonprofits, and each of those agencies shares the city's values. I called out the Safety and Wellbeing Impact Area, where it guides us to partner with nonprofits to address the most emergent and foundational community safety and wellbeing needs. And this funding goes directly towards that work. We also have an internal policy revision for our audit standards that I coupled with this agenda item. The policy applies to agencies receiving both emerging and legacy funds and potentially other locally funded projects. Our current policy requires an audit or review by an independent certified public accountant in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards based on the full budget of the agency, ranging from a year-end financial statement signed by the director and board president to a full audit-level statement. We've gotten feedback that this is burdensome for some agencies, particularly after receiving larger amount of grant funds through the pandemic. Agencies budgets are less predictable, and they've had increased budgets through the pandemic. One agency reported that a first-time audit would cost them $10,000. Some of our grant funds are $15,000, so you can see how that would be a cost burden. So our proposed audit policy is to require all agencies to submit copies of their 990 tax form, as well as a year-end profit and loss statement approved by the agency's board of directors. If the agency is already receiving an audit, we may ask to review that as well. We feel this meets the original intent of the audit policy and is a simple predictable requirement that will not be a cost burden for any of the agencies. And then agencies that are also receiving federal funding must continue to comply with financial management and audit requirements. Again, this is just for local projects and aid to agencies. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a quick question, and I'm sure it's in the minutes or the notes, but just a quick reminder. On the emerging agencies, the Iowa City Sober Living, was it that? I know that they did not get funded. Actually, I'm looking at this. Their request was for, their request was for $12,500? Or I thought it was that they had not requested enough and were therefore not going to be eligible?
No, their request was eligible. It was for $12,500.
Okay. It was just that they sort of wouldn't...
I believe it was the timing of what they were proposing and how far they were along with their establishing their sober living project and just the maximum amount of funds.
Perfect. Thank you for the reminder.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come forth.
Sorry, hi, Mazahar again. I really don't want to just, like, talk deeply about what happened, what the commission said, what the staff said, and just go around that. That's going to waste our time. I just want to focus on, we work hard to become a legacy agency. And like, whilst it is not like clear policy in Belay Zaya, whether you are a legacy agency to receive guaranteed fund or not, I guess when we work hard and we are applying for this, because no other places they give us, like, general operation fund at all. That's why we was really working hard with our applications and to come and say, like, oh, we are at the bull that funding is guaranteeing of minimum $15,000. That's what we believed. Even though maybe that's not right, it is up to the commission, but that's not said anywhere. In the website, if you go there, you will see legacy agency can apply for fund. And after that, that period, and you receive minimum $15,000. And that's what we thought, no matter what. As long as our application align with the city mission, and I think so we do, we will get fund. And also, they did not talk about the scoring. Do we get F, C, or A, or B to get fund? And of course, our scoring will be low, since some, like, commissions, like, give us zero. So, and it is percentage, and some commission did not really, you know, vote it at all or score it at all. Anyway, I'm really here to tell you that CWJ been open their door during 2020 and 2021, like, all year round during COVID, while all the organization who apply was, as their door was closed, and we become like a gateway, because they do a good job on, like, helping people. And like, financially, we was just sending the people to them. We really work hard. We need general operation fund. You know, we need to help, we helping the city of Iowa City. Yeah, we might have, like, little thing, the application may be wrong. That's completely taboo. As a city council, previous city council person, I know city money should be spent in Iowa City. And that's what we been doing. And this is not the first time we apply for fund from Iowa City and get it. We know what we doing, and we know what we going to spend the money for. Please, you sending literally bad signal to another funder when they see that we did not get approved for $15,000 by the city. Other people are not going to approve us. Because there is many thing over there, financing, things, anything. You know, just like bad signal there. Please, please allocate it, and you can find out where you can get the fund from. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from, and there is a sign in.
My name is Shell Stromquist. I'm a resident of Iowa City. Appreciate the chance to talk to council about this issue. In a lot of ways, I think it's a very simple question. The Center for Worker Justice, with which I've worked for years and for which I have a deep respect of the work that's been done over more than 10 years. And many of you know this summary of the 10-year accomplishments of this center, and I don't need to review it for you. But the issue is simple, it seems to me, that an established organization that's doing very important work and has raised funds from a variety of sources, private as well as public foundations, as well as individuals, is asking for support as a legacy agent at the minimum level. We're talking about $15,000, and that may not sound like a lot of money. And in some ways, it isn't a lot of money. But $15,000 will make a big difference in terms of meeting the ongoing operating costs of carrying out programs that serve this community and serve segments of this community that are deeply underserved. Low-wage workers and immigrants who don't have a lot of other places to turn. And we saw that particularly vividly during the pandemic. So I would ask you to reconsider the recommendation from the HCDC budget and find this money, which is badly needed, to support an organization that has a strong reputation in the community. And I'm afraid that the reasons that have been raised for not providing support by the staff and the commissioners really aren't meritorious, and they've been shifting over time. And so I would urge you to use your authority as a council to find the funds to support one of your legacy agencies at the minimum level of $15,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, Noah, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Yes, welcome. Hello, I'm just here seeking on... So at the beginning of this meeting, you had people talk about how they want an audit of Shelter House. And it's a fact that now three winters in a row, Shelter House has gone on to not have a shelter open during the winter, having emission shelter open during winter, at the start of wintertime. Now, at least three winters in a row, that's happened. And to reward Shelter House's incompetency, it decides to give Shelter House $721... No, sorry, $221 less than the amount that you have to automatic audit. Click and snow literally do in-house auditing, and the city is not going to do any auditing of it. It's just very odd to me, the fact that it's, like, literally $200 less than, if they had $200 more funded, that they would have to have an independent audit of their things. But so, an organization that's proven itself incapable of providing to the community, supposed to be helping multiple years in a row now, and the city just has done nothing to address that problem and gives it the money just as short, as close as you can get to not having to actually audit it. It's just very disturbing to me that the city council has no issues with... Tons of people have given you over the years complaints about Shelter House, and the city does not seem to care. They obviously don't care, because you've taken no actions to ensure that people have housing at all times. And just tell, just give it off to Shelter House and let them do whatever they want and have no oversight and do nothing to address housing, when the city should be doing housing themselves. But we have a landlord mayor, so I don't expect that to happen anytime soon. A landlord mayor who is selling his houses to Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition, which I don't know how that's not a conflict of interest, that you tell me that the city won't do housing, we're going to work private partners, when those are the private partners buying your houses, Bruce. That's just really weird. That's just like a massive conflict of interest. And that explains why you do nothing to address the housing. Means you care more about your pocketbook than marginalizing black people in the community. Because probably about at least 50% of the unhoused community in Iowa City are black. Just my experience, I've seen that's what national studies say. And you say the city will do nothing for housing, while you're a landlord and you're selling houses to private entities that are supposedly helping the issue, while your profit, your pocketbook goes bigger. Something to think about.
Thank you. Welcome.
Charlie Eastham from Iowa City. Good evening. Sorry to take you so up here so late, so late tonight. We want to talk about the Center for Worker Justice allocation recommendation from HCDC of $15, of $0 and ask you to restore that to $15,000, the minimum required by our own policy, or your policy anyway, for these, for this category of funding. The, I want to point out that I'm also a member of the ICCSD School Board. And to me, that's relevant because all of the activities that the Center for Worker Justice engages in have as their ultimate purpose, the increase of family income. And family income levels are hugely important to how well kids do, or what happens to the kids when they get into schools. So I think we're, we're striving for, for this similar things here in terms of our, our trying to improve the livelihood of the families and the experience of kids when they get into schools. I would request that this, I would point out a cut, one thing about the recommendations from HCDC. Some comments were made about the score HCDC assigned to the CWJ's application for these funds as being low, and it was. We, we acknowledge that. But I would also point out that the percentage of the, of our allocation request that was, would be recommended at the minimum level would be about 30, about a third of our allocation request. We recommended, we asked for about $45,000. The minimum would be $15,000. So we, our, our request would have been funded at about a third of its requested amount. And other agencies that had much higher scores also had much higher percentage request of their allocations that were funded. So I, I think that makes sense to me anyway, that $15,000 for a CWJ is appropriate. And we're not asking for that money to be taken from any other agency. I think the city has adequate reserve funds to add that amount to the overall recommendation. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else in the public that wanted to speak on this topic, council deliberation.
Sure, I can jump in. Let me first of all say I want to offer gratitude to HCDC for the work that they do, including the working through, going through all of these applications. And I know they approach, and if you go back and look at the meetings and you look at the minutes, it comes through that these commissioners approach these meetings very seriously. That they decide that they want to, you know, they take their charge seriously, and I thank them for that. And as I look through the recommendations, for the most part, I have nothing to quibble with, nothing that I would disagree with. And even in the meeting themselves, as every commission notices, when they decided to zero this out, I know that was even in the discussion in that last meeting, well, even if, even if we are making a mistake, this still has to go to the council, and the council can catch it. I'm paraphrasing from the meeting minutes, but that's essentially the gist of it. And I think that's true. You know, with any commission, we're still in process, and we can take a look at stuff, and we can decide to accept, reject, or modify. And that's, that's in bounds. We do, we do that on a regular basis. I think it's also important to note too, that on a regular basis, we don't necessarily, we aren't necessarily the first people to see an issue on, on anything. We often rely on members of the public to come forward and say, hey, I think this is a mistake. And we would be much, much worse off as a community if we didn't have that happening. So for some of those reasons, I don't feel comfortable approving this as it comes before us. Most of it I'm fine with, but as we, we've heard here tonight, and, but I would feel comfortable, maybe after some, I don't know if we want some more discussion first, but making a motion to restore the $15,000 and to take that, and instruct city staff to take that from a fund, a reserve fund of some kind, and not to take it from any of these other agencies.
A motion?
Is that appropriate to make at this time? I would, I would so move that.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
So my question is, so are legacy agencies, I mean, what is the language? Sorry, let me be clear. Are legacy agencies, is there, once they've gotten in, are they operating under a legitimate assumption that they will be funded? Is that, is the wording in the sort of welcome to a legacy agency?
Erica can jump in on this, if I misstate, but this is the first round of legacy agencies to join. The legacy agency concept just started in 2020, I believe. The council made that distinction to create the emergency, emerging and legacy dynamics. So this is really the first entry. I can say that the 15,000 minimum predates the, the legacy agency framework. It's 15,000 minimum has been there for several years, and that's more of just the recognizing the cost of administration, right? We don't want to do $62,000 grants. We'd rather do larger grants and have a bigger impact and not saddle staff with, with as much administration because a $2,000 grant administration could be the same as a $40,000 grant administration. So probably to answer your question, to be honest, it's, it's the perception of the agencies, of the, of the new agencies that were joining. If they felt that when they were included in there, that it was, that they felt like they were gonna get 15, and I think you have to take that at face value. From staff standpoint, obviously, we didn't, we didn't recommend funding for a couple of legacy agencies. So we never assumed that you were guaranteed in there. But again, the perception of the individual agencies is probably the right barometer in this case.
And I should have remembered that because I, I was part of the commission when it actually did those tiers of saying that there would be sort of a pathway to legacy. So thank you for clarifying.
I'm glad you brought that up also because I, I was a little confused too about what it means to be legacy and if it means that they have stable funding. Or I, I thought that was the understanding, that they would then feel comfortable in proceeding with, with the tasks that they do for the, in the community. Because, oh, sorry, I'm forgetting the, the microphone here. What I said was that, and I think it was questioned whether the legacy agencies maybe were thinking that they have this stable funding available, which was kind of what I had understood at one time, was the purpose of, of establishing the legacy agencies. And, and so I have to admit, I, it was disturbing to me to see this come, come back to us. Because when it was first presented to us, we asked them to take it back and re-look at, really seriously reconsider the agencies that weren't funded. And, and then, then it comes back to us exactly the same. And, and we weren't asking them to like go back to the drawing board and totally upset the apple cart and, and readjust the funds because I think as Councilor Harmson had said, those other agencies are all well-deserving also. But my understanding of the legacies, the agencies, is they, they established nonprofits that strive to serve the city's values and mission, which was also talked about. And so I think we as a council need, is, what it's sounding like is that we do need to reexamine the allocation process and discuss what it means to be a legacy agency. And most importantly, look at whether it does indeed mean that they, they have a staple funding mechanism. So.
I just need to correct myself. I'm sorry. It, there was language in the legacy application that specifically stated that inclusion as a legacy agency does not guarantee funding. So that was explicit, and I missed that, so.
Just an administrative question. The, this, from funding source standpoint, my understanding is that this pool is a combination of CDPG and, and general fund? Okay. Do we distinguish when we're pushing the money out the door? In simplest terms, the CDPG money has a lot more strings than the general fund money, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So do we, I'm just thinking about like the motion that's on the floor is to find money somewhere else for that allocation. What does that mean for staff in terms of administration?
We usually pick two or three agents, two or three experienced agencies to do CDPG that are kind of otherwise receiving federal funds. So typically DVIP, Shelter House, Neighborhood Centers do the CDPG portion of the funding each year.
So we would, we would fund a supplement of 15 with local funds?
Yeah.
And so just kind of building off too on what city staff had mentioned, I went back and looked at the, the resolution that we had taken up almost exactly a year ago, adding the three new agencies. And, you know, several times in that document, like, you know, several points in there, it says, you know, it kind of talks about the mission, right? The goal is to provide stable funding, and it's repeated throughout that document. And so in terms of the, what impression that agencies would have, that would be understandable that, that since that is the guiding principle for a legacy agency, that they would have that understanding of it is, I think, you know, pretty, pretty logical, pretty, pretty, pretty logical and would make sense to me. Sorry. It's getting late. It's, it's 11. If I repeated myself, I apologize.
Any other comments? And please clarify the motion that's on the floor.
So the motion is to, to restore the funding of 15,000, the minimum level for CWJ, taking that money out of additional reserves from the general fund, not taking it away from any of the other agencies who have already had allocated amounts.
I second that motion. So just, I just want to clarify. Yeah. So is that, that, that would be to approve the allocation from HCDC, but we're adding funding from general fund wherever, wherever staff thinks is appropriate to find that funding source?
If that's the cleanest way to do it, I mean, I'm sort of agnostic on, on that, but if that's the cleanest way to do it, then that would be my.
Well, I just want to know, are we considering the other allocation or not? The HCDC recommendation?
Oh, this would be.
I mean, if we're talking about the premise.
Amendment to that. Right?
My understanding is the resolution on the floor is amended. If, if that's approved, then there'd be a vote on the resolution as amended.
Okay. So it'd be approving the allocation from the commission plus, okay, thank you.
I really don't want to throw a wrinkle into this, but if the substance of the logic is that legacy agencies, new legacy agencies, since we, this is the first time that we've gone through this, have the right to, I, I guess I'm wondering, like, what do we do about prelude? They're a legacy agency. They didn't get any funding. Is it that we consider that? Or is it the fact that, as you had brought up earlier, that we're reliant on agencies to say, hey, we think that there's a mistake here?
Well, I think.
Otherwise, we're doing a very specific surgical thing to say, well, not all legacy agencies, just this one.
Well, actually, I think, so there's two different questions there. And actually, I would be, think it would make sense to take up what Council, Councilor Taylor said in looking at that in terms of what do we want to do moving forward? Like what do we want to establish after this round? Now, in terms of the fixing what I see as a specific ill, yeah, only one agency came to us and, and, and made a case. And we've been talking about this publicly since January, and so they, they felt they had a case to make. And I would argue that if we're in a situation where we're trying to, you know, if we, if we're feeling like one way or the other, and it's a matter of benefit of the doubt, we've already, by, in my mind, making something a legacy agency means we've already decided that if it's a close call, we would give a benefit of the doubt. I mean, it just seems logically consistent with the idea. It might not be in the text, but that seems consistent to me. And so that would be, again, one more thing towards, it makes sense to me to, to restore this and avoid what I think would be a mistake by zeroing it out. I think that would be a mistake by the city to do. I think it's worth avoiding that mistake. And I realize people, to me, that's the, that would be the, if it's a, it's a matter of two things that might not be ideal, to me, that would be the bigger mistake is to zero out the funding and go with that.
So do you have any concerns with that distinction?
No, because the, the policy is not guaranteed a minimum, so council can make that change. And it seems rational to, to distinguish the two for the reasons that Councilor Harmson just mentioned.
Thank you.
I don't know that I fully. Follow that.
Sorry, that was kind of a lawyer exchange right there. Apologize. Just that it, it was, was, what I heard was it's rational to treat Center for Worker Justice's request, or to treat them differently than community and family resources in this case, given the circumstances. That's what I heard. Because that was your question, right, Megan?
And I was also thinking of it as principle, in fact, actually, Councilor Taylor's thing of saying, or Sean echoing what Pauline had said about, and so we want to address this and look at it moving forward for legacy agencies, also is another, it's a good next step after. So it's a yes and.
And I think this is kind of a new thing. It should not be a total surprise. We'd find bugs that we, that we would want to fix moving forward so we don't end up in the same place. At least, at least make that clear. So, but that's, that's a different thing that's on the, on the table, and I feel comfortable not taking that up, that particular piece up tonight.
I think, at least for me, that piece has to be taken up.
I think it does, but I don't know this particular.
Yeah, because I, you know, a legacy agency, when I, you know, before any of this stuff came up, it was a celebration time for anyone that became a legacy agency. I thought, wow, you know, they finally arrived, you know, to this point where in my mind, money was guaranteed in a way. I, you know, I, without even thinking of it, I never thought money guaranteed or not guaranteed. But to me, that seemed to be like the staple of, of, you know, the, the program or one of the funding sources that we have here at the city. And so of course, when this all came up, that question of, wait a minute, they don't get funding, you know? I hadn't, I hadn't heard of it, but of course, the scoring, that was something new this time around. The staff recommendation, that was something new this time around. Probably not totally new into our overall processes, but when this shift happened, the first time it didn't happen, and then the second time this happened. So for me, the question is, you know, we had a, a commission that regardless of anything else, they made a recommendation to the council, even after they were redirected to reconsider their first recommendation, and they came back. So a part of my challenge is, I'm gonna respect that part of their recommendation. And as far as your amended proposal, I don't think that it is in anyone's best interest, even for a lot of reasons that I won't go into, for the council to vote right now to point, bring out one agency and, and give them funding. We have a bunch of agencies that apply all the time. They're great agencies, just like CWJ, that don't get funded. They don't get funded. We had over $300,000 that the social justice and, the social justice and racial equity grant. We had over $300,000 in requests. Only $100,000 got funded. We went through the round of some social services submitting applications, where I believe it was $3 million that you all sat on. And of seven agencies or something like that, only two got funded. And those are some amazing agencies that submitted some projects. But in order, so I, I think we, we will, we rely on our, you know, commissioners to look over the grants, knowing that, you know, there's some, you know, they make decisions ultimately. Some, you know, I, even myself have to tap into my own biases at times, you know? And, and try to focus in on what's before me. And right now, I. And right now, I just don't believe that. Approving this, this way is the right thing to do. What I will say is that we can certainly have the conversation, which I think we can have the conversation with the HCDC. Because I, if it's appropriate or if counselors agree, just about what does a legacy agency mean? What does it, you know, because there was questions amongst themselves, maybe just make it clear. If, if you've now went into that pot of money or that, with that umbrella, do you automatically get funding? I think there's a lot of questions, a host of questions that can happen, especially when we saw that they, you know, the legacy agency could not go back to the emergent agency to ask for funding. And so what I'm, what I would be interested in, in a future work session is to have the big picture, whether that's with the HCDC or just among the council. About what does it mean about a legacy agency? And then we determine what we want to do moving forward with legacy agencies. Maybe it remains the same. Maybe there's thoughts of changing it. And at that point, if we should change it, then I think we can consider looking at the two agencies that didn't get funded. And, and, and give them some minimal funding at that point. So I won't be supporting this amendment, but I think that that is the way that I would feel most comfortable. You know, looking at what, what is the expectations when you're in a legacy agency, which I think is just a, I mean. That's a great honor because it just shows that they, you know, these individuals have demonstrated a service long enough for our city. To say, hey, we, we need you and we want to partner with you.
Thank you. And that's, that's very well taken. Now, I would just point out the one, and, and these are incredibly tough decisions, which is why I am not, you know, in any way slamming HCDC. I see this as a little tweak to, to their recommendations. But I would point out the one difference between this and many of the other grand things is we established a category of legacy agency. And to me, that's a piece that makes this one a little different, in, in my mind. So that's, I just wanted to point that out, that I recognize what you're saying. I see this as a little different for that reason, so. But that's, I think you raised some great points.
All right. Here are no other comments. So this is roll call for the amended, for the amendment of finding financial resources of fifteen thousand dollars. Specifically to be given to CWJ and the staff will figure out that funding source.
You can just have a voice vote on the motion.
Okay.
Because it's the motion to amend and then we'll vote on the resolution.
Oh, all in favor? Oh.
As amended, yes. So, so this is just the motion to approve and.
Okay, alright. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so, one, two, three, four? Oh, aye. Alright, so four ayes and nay, nay?
Nay.
So four to two, a motion passes. So now we go to the original motion. If there's any more comments.
So it will be just, we would amend exhibit then A to put in fifteen thousand and have the, the funding then from the general funds.
Yep, yep.
Ready, ready for a roll call on that one?
Yes.
Okey dokey.
Roll call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn. Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Alter. Yes.
Did you say Burgess? Maybe it's getting late. Okay, I didn't even hear Burgess. Okay. Alright, so motion passes six to zero. Awesome. Alright, and we'll bring in Counselor Dunn. And he recused himself from this item.
Welcome back.
Item number nine G is assessment schedule. Resolution adopted an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleanup of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair and stop box repair charges. And directing the city clerk to certify the same to the Jones County Treasurer for a collection in the same manner as property taxes. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Burgess, second by Alter. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number ten, council appointments, ten A, senior center. One vacant to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December thirty first, twenty twenty-three. We have a gender balance of no requirement and council discussion.
Like we have one up.
Only one application, yeah.
Appoint that person.
Alright.
I think they're great.
Alright. And I don't have the name. I know it was just one female that applied.
Nancy Ostregno? Did I, no, did I pronounce that?
Okay, can I get a motion to appoint Nancy?
Ostregney.
Ostregney?
Yeah.
Alright.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, second by Alter. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass seven to zero. Item number eleven is announcements of vacancies previous. Eleven A, announcement of airport commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Community police review board, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Historic preservation commission at large, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Historic preservation commission longfellow, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic preservation commission north side, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Housing and community development commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Library board of trustees, two vacancies to fill a six-year term. Planning and zoning commission, two vacancies to fill a five-year term. Planning and zoning commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public art advisory committee, two vacancies, one at large and one art of design professional to fill three-year terms. Applications must be received by Friday PM, Tuesday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Historic preservation commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Historic preservation commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic preservation commission, Wood Lawn, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number twelve, city council information. Item number thirteen, reports on items from city staff, city manager's office.
I'm just gonna get.
City attorney?
Just thank you to First Assistant Sue Doolook for staying up until eleven fifteen to cover for my conflict, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Our city clerk office. Alright. And we are at item number fourteen. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Burgess, second by Taylor, because she's closest to me. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.